I didn't know about Russia, but Spokane, uh, it's going to be.
Oh, yeah.
So I, soon as I saw that coming, I got the head on three way.
I didn't even get anybody.
I was there. That wasn't easy. I don't know.
Please, uh, this is our board, uh, meeting number six dash twenty-four held at the University of Idaho. Honor can they extension conference room in San Point, I believe. Welcome one and all. Uh, the first order of business is welcome. Jennifer.
There you are, okay.
Mr. Parker.
Yeah.
Ms. Cohanson.
Here.
Mr. Pitt.
Eric.
Mr. McMahon.
Eric.
Mr. Olstead.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Eric.
Mr. Resto.
Eric.
Andrew.
Here, okay. Okay, next time, Mr. Patton, administrative rules update?
Yeah, Eric Bo with the department is going to provide the board an update on administrative rules processes and Eric will be on the screen for voice.
Welcome, Eric. Can you hear us okay?
I can hear you great. Can you guys hear me okay? Perfect. Uh, thank you Chairman Rainbow, uh, Ray Bold, members of the board. Uh, I do appreciate the opportunity to provide an update on our rulemaking efforts. Uh, it's continuing to be a busy, uh, twenty twenty-four. Uh, so we completed our first round of public meetings. Uh, in April and May, uh, for active, for our, for active rule makings. Uh, thirty-seven oh three oh one, our adjudication rules. The public meeting was held on May sixteenth. Uh, we had moderate participation in that effort. Uh, and only received a couple of comments, uh, to date. Uh, we, we might receive some more though. Uh, the next meeting, uh, for the adjudication rules is scheduled for June eighteenth. Uh, that's likely, uh, based on how it's working right now, uh, gonna be our last meeting for that. We need to hold two public meetings. For our beneficial use exam rules, uh, we held a public meeting on May sixth. Uh, again, we had moderate participation. Uh, we received a few comments, a couple oral, uh, and then a few written comments. The next public meeting scheduled for July twenty-second. And again, that's likely to be our, our last public meeting, uh, for the, for that rulemaking. As it sits now. For our well construction standard rules. Uh, we held a, our public meeting on April twenty-fifth. Uh, we did have, uh, lively participation. Uh, and we received a few comments in that process. Um, a few written, uh, a number of verbal comments in the meeting. Um, so we're working on, um, some updates to our straw man for that. Uh, our, our next scheduled meeting for the well construction standard rules is June twentieth. That's likely gonna be our last meeting. Uh, we're just working through a few of the comments. Coming up with a solution. Uh, mainly revolved around, uh, the definition of, uh, what an unusable well is. Uh, with regards to, to when an unusable well should be decommissioned by the owner. And then, uh, also we're having a conversation about how, um, essentially the waiver process for separation distances between wells and septic and sewer systems. So we're sorting that out right now, but I anticipate, um, by June twentieth, that's likely to be our last meeting. And hopefully, uh, we'll be on track for a, uh, a proposed rule in August. And then our final rulemaking, the UIC rules, so thirty-seven oh three oh three are rules of minimum standards for the construction and use of injection wells, our injection well rules. Uh, we held that public meeting on May fifteenth. And again, we had some, uh, good participation, uh, received a number of verbal comments. And, uh, I anticipate receiving a few written comments in the coming week. Mainly, uh, the biggest questions were revolved around, uh, the definition of unreasonable contamination. Uh, which has implications as to, uh, what extent reuse water derived from municipal and industrial wastewater sources uh, needs to be treated prior to injection in a groundwater source. So that basically sums up where we're at on the rulemaking front. Uh, happy to stand for any questions, uh, Mr. Chairman or members of the board may have.
Hey, uh, board members, any questions for Eric?
Hey, I'm not seeing any Eric. That's good work. It sounds like you're making progress. It's, uh, not always the most exciting work there is, but it's, uh, work that needs to be done. We appreciate your efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, all right. Next up.
Okay. Yeah. There's our mountain guy.
Welcome, Mike.
Oh, Chairman Redmond, thanks for having me here. Board, um, with Weaver. I'm gonna give you a brief update on Mountain Home Air Force Base, uh, a lot of, uh, the Dylan project. So first of all, pretty much this is gonna be mostly good news. You haven't really had. Um, construction is on schedule. Dylan and I went out there last week and drove along and we've got about seven miles of pipe that are laid out for crap. And, uh, in order to put them into a trench, um, we're gonna start with Jack and Boring across Simco Road. Jack and Boring means we're gonna horizontal place the pipe underneath it rather than having to rip out the pipe. Mountain Home Highway District does not want us messing with the road surfaces, so we're gonna go into that. And then the following week, we've got a trencher and it's gonna come out and start to stay in trenches. So, uh, we are, we are constructing right now. Uh, design review is in progress. That's just a thing right here that we're working on and hopefully by tomorrow, we'll have all of our comments into, uh, the, now we've, uh, we've done two other design reviews, so what we've got at this point is pretty minor, so there's really not much there. Leaves us with, uh, easements, permissions, rights of life, and I'm sure you're aware, as you know, this, uh, fund that we purchased, uh, I think it's been from, uh, Simplot here a couple of weeks ago. Now, our right of way with Mountain Home Highway District to use their, or actually the permission to use their right of way when it went through Simplot was contingent on the Simplot right of way, so we couldn't get that until we get the Simplot right of way. We couldn't get an IDOL right of way until we got the, uh, the Mountain Home Highway District right of way. So those things are all falling into place right now. We're, we're kind of hoping we're getting those things out the way we should. BLM right of way is a little bit behind, uh, behind schedule. We currently have the two thousand eighteen right of way, and that covers most of what we, we need to do with this project. Uh, so we're currently operating and working within that two thousand nineteen eighteen agreement with that plant that we got from them. Um, hopefully, the BLM will want it to be done fairly soon and we'll be able to start working in Kansas early. Otherwise, we won't be able to start very soon in August. Um, which is okay, we can do that, but we'd like to start over. And, uh, that really is all I've got for you for today, so if you've got any questions, please.
Hey, uh, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh. I, I should know this, but I've forgotten. How big a pipe are we putting in?
Uh, well, for round numbers, we'll call it twenty inches. I think we've got everything from eighteen to twenty-two, but that's plenty.
Right, Mr. Chairman, like, um, so the, uh, your, the airbase is gonna be a year behind us at least on getting their plant ready. So we test just, just dumping it out into the desert then when we, when we test the pipe. And.
So, Mr. Redmond, uh, Mr. Olstead, the, uh, plan is for the people on the Air Force side to half construct a two, three million gallon tanks. Uh, that will be ready for us and we will be able to, uh, put our testing water into that. And that should be sufficient to test. If it's not, there is a plan of bringing those tanks into the somewhere. We're gonna test it. We're gonna train the Air Force people up on how to use it, operate it, and then we're gonna hand it over to the Air Force.
So, oh, Mr. Chairman, so we, we have like a warranty period, you know, it's possible that, I mean, is that warranty period extended because of their being a year late on the treatment plan or, or we, we get to those tanks and, uh, our, our work's done?
Um, there is a warranty on it that that will be transferred over to the Air Force. It's NTO and Stand Tech actually, uh, we're confused with them. And that will transfer over to the Air Force, so if something comes up, they're going to deal with it.
Okay, you have questions? Okay, nice to see progress being made.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, next up, North Idaho adjudication?
Yep, uh, Evan Roda with the Port Lane Office here will give us an update on, uh, the status of the Northern Idaho adjudications.
Welcome, Evan.
Thank you.
You know, we'll, we'll see you later, Mike.
I'll be back, sir.
Uh, good morning, members of the board, uh, Chairman Redmond and Director Weaver, and everyone else we have here. Uh, I'm Evan Roda. I supervise the adjudication unit for our Northern Region team up here. And I'm just gonna give a brief update on our, our adjudication program and primarily specifically on our role within New York in the Northern Region here. So the Northern Idaho, uh, water rights adjudications were implemented with the path to Diva HoCo forty-two four six B. We recognize that to effectively manage the waters of Northern Idaho, uh, we need a comprehensive determination of the nature, extent, and priority of the water rights and the users, both surface and groundwater. The Northern Idaho adjudications were split into three phases. Phase one, the Corinna's Book River Basin adjudication, uh, phase two, the Palouse River Basin adjudication. And phase three, the Clark Fork, uh, Pond Ray Basin adjudication. And we actually have a new exciting addition to that, which I'll touch on here at the end. Uh, we were implemented in two thousand six, uh, Idaho Legislature authorized IDWR to proceed with the planning and implementation of the course of our three adjudications that in Northern Idaho, beginning with the CSRBA, the Corinna's Book River Basin adjudication. Uh, commencement order for that phase was issued in two thousand eight. And this is just a brief map here, a brief map of, uh, phase one that shows the, uh, the basins included with this, uh, with this particular adjudication, CSRBA. Uh, current status here on the CSRBA, our director's report for the last remaining basin, the CSRBA, uh, basin ninety-five part two, uh, was filed with the court February, uh, twenty nineteen. And, uh, to date, we have now fourteen thousand two hundred eighty total claims reported to court, and we received decrees for thirteen thousand eight hundred four. Uh, some outstanding objection, uh, outstanding issue remaining in the CSRBA, uh, include base ninety-five, we still have fourteen objections to nine state-based, uh, subcases. Uh, these include the Avista power claims as well as the governor's lake, uh, lake level right from quarterly. Um, some Federal Reserve claims are still out there as well, two hundred eighty-six total, uh, active tribal claims for the Corinna Tribe. Uh, an order, uh, was recently issued by the court, in fact, multiple orders that you can see there, I want three of those, but those orders related to the Federal Reserve claims, um, as number above, uh, there's, there's eighty-two amended claims that were included in those orders, uh, as well as one lake claim and one that had previously been recommended is disallowed. Um, so as far as those amendments goes, it's been ten years since the tribe's original filing, so there was quite a bit of changes to those claims, and then some of those were significant. Um, as far as I know on those, they're, they're still currently on litigation track, um, and there's, uh, no formal mediator that's been appointed there. So phase two, uh, basin eighty-seven, this is our Palouse River Basin adjudication. Our current status in basin eighty-seven, uh, commencement order for this was issued in twenty seventeen, during March. Uh, director's report was filed August twenty twenty-one, um, and as of now, we have, uh, two thousand two hundred and ninety-nine total plans reported to the court. We received decrees for one thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight of those. Uh, some outstanding issues in basin eighty-seven includes a hundred and fifty-nine objections to eighty-one state-based claims. Uh, those include those tribal claims there, the seventy-three objections by the Nesspierce and also seventy-three by the US's trustee on behalf of them. Uh, we have two hundred and three Federal Reserve claims. Um, as far as those Federal Reserve claims, they do include, uh, some wells, um, and also a lot of mirror claims against some of the other state-based claims on, on springs and those, uh, service water sources, um, eighteen provisional claims that are noted there. Um, those were actually, uh, they actually include some off reservation claims on private land. Uh, those are primarily on springs that the tribe has located through maps, so right now they're pursuing, uh, some of those, uh, private individuals and trying to get access to the properties to confirm whether or not those springs are there.
So, Miss, uh, Miss Paulas.
Yes, sir.
May I ask a question about the objections on basin eighty-seven? How many of those are in the potlatch range? Any?
I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, to be honest, so we'd have to look, but I can't give that answer in the back to you. Uh, phase three, uh, this is the one that we're currently underway with, uh, basin ninety-six, ninety-seven, and help for Pond Ray River Basin adjudication. It's our current status in the CFRBA, uh, commencement order for the CFRBA was en, uh, was issued June fifteen, twenty twenty-one. Our further management notices were, were mailed out to basin ninety-seven in September of twenty-one. And, uh, as of now, we've received two hundred and twenty, or excuse me, two thousand twenty-one claims received in basin ninety-seven, six thousand two nine, two hundred and ninety-five claims in basin ninety-six. Um, and I'll update this number, but as of the data collection for this slide, we had, uh, completed preliminary recommendations for eight hundred and thirty-eight claims. Our second round service notifications have been mailed, in fact, we just passed the deadline here, uh, this last week, um, that, that May seventeenth deadline for the final uh, second round services, the notices that we sent out to ninety-six. Um, just for your information, the second round service notifications are sent out to, to all the people that might have an ownership interest in, in a water right that's reported there. Previously, maybe a license or statutory claim, and it just alerts them of the need to file that claim in order to keep that, that water right active. Um, our, uh, filing of the, uh, yeah, excuse me, the, um, deadline passed last week and that increased quite a bit of our, our call traffic and also the, uh, walk-in traffic, so we're kind of excited to pass that and kind of get, to get our wheels turning full speed towards our recommendations here. Um, this is just a visual representation of that progress that we're making as we work through those recommendations. Um, our goal is to have our director's report, um, submitted to the court this fall. And then, uh, with that, um, because I did collect this data in April, I just wanted to do some updates on those numbers too. As of yesterday, uh, we have two thousand thirty-six active claims within basin ninety-seven total. Um, but we've got nine hundred and eighty-one total preliminary recommendations done, so that count at seven fifty-eight has been increased since that time. We're still on track for that submission of the director's report this fall. And then our plan is to submit the director's report for part two of basin ninety-seven the following fall of twenty twenty-five. Some topics of interest in the CFRBA is the water right for the operation of Priest Lake Outlet Control Structure, um, as well as the minimum stream flow water right in Priest River. Uh, just a word and note there, IDWR for C G, the board's claims for those minimum stream flow water rights, uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, so we have received those claims. Uh, in addition to that, uh, defining the elements. Defining the elements of the governor's nineteen twenty-seven priority, uh, water rights for Priest Lake and Lake Pond Ray. Uh, those water rights were established through the passage of Idaho Code sixty-seven forty-three oh four, as a point of note there. Uh, we did actually receive the claims, the funding was, was resolved, and we received the claims, uh, for those water rights actually May ninth. So we've just received those claims for those. Um, also Albany, uh, Albany Falls Dam, this is, uh, operated by the US Army, uh, Army Corps of Engineers. So there's a topic of interest because the Army Corps just has a history of not participating in the adjudication process. Um, but an example of that would be, would be the, uh, Dorchak Reservoir, which I think we still haven't filed any claims on. Um, so that's a point of note there. And then also the Kalispel Tribe, they have some water right claims out there. Uh, to date, we've received thirteen, uh, claims in basin ninety-seven from the tribe and twelve in basin ninety-six. However, those are all based on state, uh, state-based water rights, so we don't have any Federal Reserve claims from them at this time in that adjudication. Oh, lastly, the Cooney River Basin adjudication is kind of the exciting development that we have. So the Cooney Basin, uh, ninety-eight was originally carved out of the Northern Idaho adjudications. It had been planned to be included in it, but they carved it out for various reasons. And we've been working with our staff, uh, to really build up the momentum and working with the folks up north here and, and kind of shift the tide a little bit. And, and as we've successfully adjudicated and taken claims down south, it's really built up that momentum as we move north. And, uh, our IDWR staff had met with Cooney Gallery Research Initiative in February twelfth, twenty twenty-four. This was a, a little bit of following up to some meetings we had previously. And they were so enthused, uh, after that meeting that they fast-tracked House Bill six eighty-seven to authorize the Cooney. Um, and that bill was, it was signed by Governor Little, uh, March twenty-eighth, so just a little less than two months after our meeting that they had that bill signed. Uh, the petition to commence the Cooney, uh, will be filed with the courts by this December. Um, and once that commencement order is issued by the court, our tentative plan is to begin claims taking in twenty twenty-six. Uh, so what the, what the current plan is on that, we plan on pausing the recommendation process of the CFRBA after we submit our director's report for part two of basin ninety-seven. We're gonna briefly pause the CFRBA to take all the claims in for the Cooney, strike while the iron's hot, so to speak. We'll get those claims in and then we'll resume the recommendation process, um, for the, uh, part four claims down below basin ninety-six. And part of our plan there too is with that pause, it's also gonna be timed out with our submission of a director's report through the Bear River adjudication in the southern part of the state. That will allow that court kind of free up some staff with that as well. Any questions?
No.
Hey, questions? Go ahead.
I just have a comment. The last time that the board met at Priest Lake, the letters just went out for the adjudication, so it seems like you've made quite a bit of progress.
We have. Thank you.
All right, just curious, is that the, the priest like thoroughfare there or is that?
It is, Commissioner Olstead, it is, yeah, yeah, which, which you probably.
I, I made it up there a couple of years ago, pretty, pretty quick.
It is gorgeous. Yeah, all the, all the pictures on these sides are kind of geared towards, uh, our, our CFRBA.
Okay, you're, you're doing gangbusters, uh, you're someone else's veterans in the SRBA, um, you're just fine.
Yeah, well, as you can tell right now, we're highly caffeinated and.
Literally, I'm triggered.
Wheels are turning.
Okay, great report, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, North Idaho Fisheries, Streamflow, Challenging, my vicinity, fishing game?
Great, I'm just gonna take this off, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
But, uh, good morning, uh, glad to see everybody up here and everybody's adaptable to a cozy space. Um, so I, I just wanna, I guess, kick off a presentation that Fishing Game, uh, staff are gonna give you today. They're, uh, I thought this was a, a really good opportunity, given that you're here at North Idaho, for them to give you an update on some of the fisheries' stream flow, uh, issues that they're observing and some of the projects they're working on. And, um, I'll go ahead and let them introduce themselves, but, uh, but as I think you all know, the board has a number of minimum stream flow water rights up north, so there's a, I think, a direct correlation between what the different agencies are tracking up here. Uh, in fact, probably the majority of your minimum stream flow rights are, are located up north. And, uh, um, and since many of those were initiated originally to try and support fish habitat and aqua life culture or aqua life activities, these, uh, minimum flows are something that, uh, Fishing Game and, and others take into account, I mean, uh, um, when we're watching what's going on, um, in these different areas. So I think that, uh, um, Playhickey and Merritt Horse, um, Horsemen are, we both have the regional uh, technical assistance managers based up in North Idaho. And, uh, we've given them only a limited time to speak today because we've got a lot of topics, but this is a complex issue, and so they're gonna touch on a few key priority areas that illustrate some of what they're observing. And, uh, the expectation or the recommendation might be that if the board, uh, is, um, interested in engaging, uh, then we'd like to, I think, work with the Stream Flow Committee at some point to, again, dive into some of the issues in, in more detail. And I think one of those, uh, issues you might find has a lot to do with how productive, uh, the adjudication, uh, is in, in, up north. We're seeing a lot of new claims and actually new water right filings that are also located in some of these areas, uh, where, uh, Fishing Game and others are noticing some transition in, in flows and some pressures on the, uh, on the fish, fishing wildlife system. So with that, I'll just turn it over to, uh, to you all.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board and water resources, we thank you for the opportunity to come and present here today. Welcome. So IDF is collaborating with a small group that includes, um, department of environmental quality, OSC, NOAA Fisheries, the Nesspierce Tribe. Um, on these issues, we've been working on this for about two and a half years. Additionally, we wanna give a shout out to Amy Castle and John McFredo, who have been commenting, uh, representing the board on some of the water allocation recently, um, in, on some of these minimum stream flows. And, uh, Northern Region personnel who, um, done a fair amount to try to accommodate, so. So, Idaho Fishing Games' mission is to protect, serve, and perpetuate and manage Idaho's wildlife resources. Um, the Minimum Stream Flow Program was approved to preserve stream flows and lake elevations for public health, safety, and welfare. Minimum stream flow is the amount of flow necessary to preserve desired stream values, including fish and wildlife habitat, aquatic life, navigation, and transportation and recreation, water quality, and aesthetic view. So why we're here, um, we wanna bring up some of the challenges we're facing and some of the issues we're seeing with flow and fish. Um, present a little bit of some of the data we have. We're gonna talk about two basins specifically, so that would be the Potlatch Basin and the Pat River on this examples, um. The issues are wider than that, but some of these are some where some of the issues are, uh, most stark. And seek assistance from the Water Resource Board, um, to investigate opportunities and solutions to work on this. So our issues are salmon and trout are facing less stream flow. Um, we're experiencing a change in hydrograph. So North Idaho is receiving the same amount of precipitation that historically has. Um, however, the average low and high temperatures have increased in the last hundred years, and so statewide, the average low temperature is now above freezing for Idaho in the winter. These tend to be higher up north, and so we get more rain, less snow, and more rain on snow events, and we're seeing um, runoff come earlier, be stronger, and less water for summer. Why this is important, um, we have spring, summer, and fall spawning stocks in many of these. So, uh, spring and fall stocks, you know, tend to be March, April, October, November. Um, summers in between, we've got eggs and egg sack fry that are in these systems just about all year, given that we've got spawning that's spread out over that timeframe. And juveniles that are in these systems for up to thirty years. So there are specific times, you know, typically, um, different than Southern Idaho up here, we have plenty of winter wa, winter water. It's really summer flows that we suffer for. Simultaneously, we see, you know, the Water Resource Board, um, continue applications for these basins where we have minimum stream flows that aren't being met at least seasonally in parts of these systems. And we don't have water boards, um, or really quantification, so there's a lack of water accounting and ability to address it. Um, our only real recourse in this is, uh, really a burdensome water right protest procedure, um, to have fish considered in many of these allocations. So our address is we'd like to work with, um, the Water Resources Planning and Projects Bureau. Um, hopefully with the Minimum Stream Flow and Enhancement Committees. Help understand the solutions to maintain enhanced stream flow in Northern Idaho and support water demand and help protect fisheries and habitat restoration projects. So in the Clearwater Basin, um, since nineteen ninety-six. So in the Clearwater Basin, um, since nineteen ninety six, there's been over two hundred projects, um, by twenty two restoration partners. Totalling over a hundred and thirty six million dollars spent on habitat projects. Um, this is primarily Pacific Coast Salmon Recovery Funds and BPA money. This doesn't include, um, funds spent by the Forest Service, BLM, um, DEQ three nineteen grants, the Fisher Wildlife Service. Or other money that was spent on SRBA. Um, in the Potlatch drainage since two thousand and two, we've had ninety projects totaling over thirty three million dollars. We've treated over fifteen miles of stream. And up north, um, Abissa and Bonneville Power, um, spend over two thou- or two million dollars annually. On research for bull trout inventory habitat projects and passage. So.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, what, that's what do you mean by miles of stream treated, what does that mean?
So many of these habitat projects, um, are geared towards holding water in summer and restoring habitat for fish. And so when you take those two hundred projects like in the Clearwater Basin, you know, maybe you're doing, um. Doing Beaver Dam analogs in some, in a tributary and you do a half mile of that. So those add up to like fifty or sixty stream miles that have been treated over that timeframe.
So the treatment is part of these Beaver Dam analogs and.
It could be, it could be also a plethora of different projects, including putting coarse woody debris in, um. Some of those are, um, removing barriers, um, that open up habitat. So, um, it's a lot of different habitat projects. Um, we're trying to keep this at the big thirty thousand foot elevation. So here's the Potlatch Basin, um, it's basin eighty six, there's Lewiston and Moscow. It's, um, one of the larger tributaries in the lower Clearwater River. Makes up about five hundred and eighty three square miles and receives an average precipitation of a little over twenty seven inches in moisture. Um, we have wild steelhead in the system and fall Chinook. So you're all familiar with, uh, water rights here. Um, this is the water right for the Potlatch Basin. Um, it has very monthly flows, but some of the key flows here, um, August is one of the real big. Points here, um, so the minimum flow is forty three CFS. And really important times are that July through, um, October timeframe. And so in that timeframe, um, you know, we have, they vary from forty three CFS to eighty six CFS. So the next series of graphs are based on the monthly average flow from the gauge at the bottom of the system. Um, the monthly average is the blue line, the orange line is the minimum stream flow value for that month. And the blue dotted line here is the trend in water for that month over that twenty year data set. And so what, what you see is January through April, um, we generally see an increasing trend in the amount of water we're receiving. Um, and generally speaking, the minimum stream flows at those times are being met. So the next series of graphs are May through August. Um, as you see, there's a pretty strong negative trend in flow values over that timeframe there. Um, with the May and June, only occasionally are the minimum stream flows met and they've never been met in July and August. For September through December, we see a similar thing, it's kind of a mixed bag. Um, September and October, those minimum stream flows have never been met. Um, they're intermittently met in November and December. So why this is important, so here's a different look at the basin. Um, this shows the distribution of juvenile steelhead in the system. And so. The squares and the dots aren't really, they're different survey methods. But as you see, these fish tend to be up high in the system. Um, many of these tributaries to Potlatch, um, have low flows, they suffer from, um, high temperatures. Um, in portions of these that can be intermittent. So there's a lot in this graph, but if you look at the graph in the upper left hand corner. What you see is the relationship between August string flow and juvenile survival. Um, and it's positively correlated and part of that is, um, depending on the tributary. Um, these fish might become isolated and li- literally living in pools because the base flow isn't there. And so if you don't get rain and some of those things, um, you end up having, um, die offs in these pools. And so the bottom, this is down towards the gauge at the bottom of the system. This is, um, April twenty three and August of twenty three. Um, the April flows are thirteen hundred and five CFS, August flow there is three point five CFS. Um, so as you see, when fish are coming in to spawn in this system, they can, passage is easy, they can get anywhere in the system. Um, but as we go into fall, flows will pick up, but steelhead, um. Or not steelhead, but false Chinook don't always have the opportunity to use this basin based on flows. And so in the upper corner there, we've done two different, um, flow studies in the basin. One was in Big Meadow Creek, um, conducted by University of Idaho. Um, from the reservoir up there, they spilled point two five, or point two one CFS. Um. In Big Meadow Creek, and they didn't measure like fish survival, but it brought the TM Dell, TMDL into compliance, which. For temperature and dissolved oxygen, um, to support salmon and habitat. We also had a study, we did it, we spilled water from Spring Valley Reservoir. Um, we did that July through September, we spilled half the CFS. It returned flow to eighteen kilometers a stream. Um, both of these studies, you know, reduced temperature, increased dissolved oxygen and increased the amount of fish habitat in the system. So. As part of the, um, ongoing habitat work, we have in the Potlatch Basin. Um, in many of these tributaries, we do, um, habitat transects and those include doing two five hundred meter. Transects in the upper part of the basin and two in the lower part of each of these tributaries. And so they're repeated in the same stretch every year. And so what you see is, um, in the pictures there, you've got, um, a lower water here. This is in one of the lower parts of a trib versus a, a good water here, and so it can be pretty stark in what they look like. Um, the two measurements they typically do in these transacts is percent wetted. So if it's, you know, we have places that the water's low enough, it'll go subsurface and so, um, at that time of year. And the other is the number of pools per hundred meters. And so given that this is the same stretch, if you look like twenty fifteen was an awful dry year for us. We see a little over one pool per hundred meters in that timeframe. In the same stretch in twenty fourteen, it was over eight. So, um, for juvenile steelhead, you know, it's a, an eightfold decrease in the amount of habitat that's available.
Going back a minute, you said you, in those two, uh, streams, you released a point two one CFS and half a CFS. Where'd you release that from, is there storage or?
So one of them is a, a reservoir for Troy, okay? And the other one is a fishing game reservoir. And we've actually, um, applied for a water right and are pursuing, we're going to make that an annual event. So we're got a approximately a four million dollar project to raise that dam and store more water. So out of Spring Valley Reservoir, we could do that every year. And so, um, we're pursuing Pacific Coast Salmon Recovery Funds and BPA money. And we've got the initial nod, we've got, um, the water right has gone through Water Resources. Um, they're funding engineering now, and so this fall we'll go into that with, uh, engineering to, to do that.
Yes, thank you.
Chairman Rabels, members of the board, Director Weaver, uh, Minister Merritt Fordman, um, I'm the Panhandle Regional Technical, Technical Assistance Manager. And I'm going to be talking about some, some of the Panhandles issues and then finishing up on the presentation.
Well.
So. Panhandle has been known in Idaho, people that, that southern part of the state is the dry part and that north part of the state has all water. And we do, we have a third of the state's surface water in Panhandle. Um, but. There's a changing hydrograph, uh, Clay touched on it. We're getting less snowpack, more of our precipitation is falling as rain and increase in rain on snow events and our summers are, are dry. Uh. This is a snapshot that when I was preparing this presentation, I went to the USGS, um, water dashboard and. You look at state, the southern part, known as the, the drier part of the state, all these screen gauges are shown in blue and green, which means good. Uh, if you look at the north part of the state in there, we're all in reds and oranges, um, and this shows the percent of normal stream flow. So on May ninth, um, looking at kind of the big four up here where we have minimum stream flows and gauges. Were less than forty percent on all of our major streams for that part of the year.
Exactly.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, you said normal stream flow, i- in most of these streams, is the normal stream flow less than the minimum stream flow? Or is it more than, or equal to?
So USGS looks at, at percent of normal as a twenty year average. So they average everything, that is what they call normal. So it's, it's percentage there.
This is, and this is a snapshot.
This is just a snap.
On May eighth, there, the, what would you would typically expect in a spring, if, on that date as average? They, you would below that. That.
That's correct, yep. So we've got, uh.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Anderson, can you, where those, well, plus, you know, far south, pack river, where is that?
Uh, I, I will have a.
Okay, and then I think, uh, Mr. Robinson's, uh, question was a comparison of what is normal versus what is established as the minimum stream flows. Are the normal flows higher or lower than what the minimum stream flow?
That was my question.
Established at.
Some are, some are higher, some are getting to be about equal and, and some are approaching lower, just depends on the system. Um, so the Pack River, the Priest River, the Coeur d'Alene River and the St. Joe River are, are, they're all gauged, they all have a minimum stream flow. They all are either wholly or partly within bull trout critical habitat, um, designated by the US Fish and Wildlife Service. And some of them are not meeting their minimum stream flows for up to a hundred plus days a year. Uh. But those, so the Pack River is a, one of the major tributaries to Lake Pontare. Um, the Priest River, um, you guys will go see that today, but that, that's a tributary to the, the Pontare River. And then the Coeur d'Alene and St. Joe are the two major tributaries to Lake Coeur d'Alene. All right, here's, here's, here's your map of the Pack River. Um, so this is Lake Pontare. And down here you have the Clark Fork River coming in, that's where, that's one of, it, that is the major tributary where Lake Pontare gets most of its water. And then the Pack River is up here in the north. Um, those black triangles are, uh, locations that we do bull trout red, red counts. Uh, so as you can see, the Pack River is a, is a migration route to a lot of spawning habitat for bull trout. The Colburn Gage is right about there, um, on the pack, so it's a little bit south of, uh, about halfway. And the minimum stream flow actually extends from Zuni Creek, which is way up here at the top of the map, to Brown's Creek, which is right here. So the bottom portion of the Pack River, as it goes into the delta, is now protected by a minimum stream flow. The upper portion is, the upper portion has most of that spawning habitat. Um, the pack drain is just two hundred and ninety square miles and, um, the pack supports. Very, it, it, it supports a lot of the northern part of the lakes fisheries. Um, and it's got some important bull trout. This is about a twenty six inch bull trout trying to find some cover there. Um, in the pack, the big fish supports native cutthroats. And, um, one of the big ones is, it supports these guys, um, in the lake. All three of those species use the pack as a, um, migration route to spawning. Um, as you can see, those, those guys make fish fishermen very happy, um, and they're very important to that fishery. It's world renowned and it, it supports local economies. Um. So it's, also, um, you've got those big Gerard rainbows, bull trout can be up to about thirty six inches. And they're, they're, they're going up and down, um, the pack trying to reach their spawning grounds, they need, they need a bit of water. Um, so tributary conditions can affect these fish. Um, they can run into temperature berries, barriers, um, bull trout are very sensitive to temperature. Um, low barriers, um, in low, low runoff years, you can have physical barriers where a fish that size cannot make it up. Um, also, in the Panhandle, our, our upper tributaries have a tendency, when they get low, they'll sub out and whole entire sections of the creeks will go dry. Um, so I started doing a desktop analysis, um, for the pack. Because it is likely our most important spawning tributary to support these fish, which they're not anatomous fish, but. They're kind of a mini anatomous, they're, they're called fluvial or adfluvial, they live in these larger freshwater, um, systems. And they swim up in the tributaries to spawn. So they don't go all the way to the ocean, but they do, they are migratory fish. Um, so that's the, the water right for the Pack River, got a priority date of nineteen ninety two. Um, and from November to the end of July, it's at a hundred and twenty nine CFS. And then from August through Halloween, it's fifty four CFS. So granted, there was no minimum stream flow in the sixties and eighties, but unfortunately the, the gauge at Colburn, um, it's got data from the sixties through the eighties. Then it was turned off from nineteen eighty two to twenty fourteen, so there's a big data gap there. And then you've got twenty sixteen to twenty twenty three. And so the blue is days, days of the year that's met, the orange is days of the year, but it's not met. So from nineteen sixty to nineteen eighty one, it was actually kind of going up versus two thousand sixteen to twenty three. You can see that there's a negative downward trend there. Also, uh, in doing my desktop analysis, I asked Michelle and she graciously provided me with, um, the, the, the water rights on the Pack River. Um, and documented legal water rights on the pack are less than nine CFS. So this is not a water use issue, um, per se. Okay, uh, so can't see the top there, this is, um, for the entire Lake Pontare system, this is bull trout red count numbers. Um, that red line is the ten year average, and as you can see here, we're on kind of a declining native trend. You know, you might say, well, we were down there, um, in the nineties, um, but in the nineties, we had a harvest fishery on bull trout. Idaho didn't stop harvesting bull trout till nineteen ninety six, and they were listed by the US Fish Wildlife Service in nineteen ninety eight. So you can see after they were listed, we get to the early two thousands, then we started to do lake trout suppression on Lake Pontare. We get to the early two thousands, then we started to do lake trout suppression on Lake Pondure. That's a direct competitor for food. Um, when we did that, you can see that the numbers responded even more. Um, up to two thousand seven, when we had our our highest counts. Um. So. Now that our counts are dropping again, we're looking at. Um, reasons. Why, and they're doing some research, um. If I putting pit tag arrays on some of our major tributaries, so we can tell when these tagfish go up. We can tell when they come back come back and then we can count the reds that those fish are caught for, um. So what we found is survival in the lake. Is very high, we have a a very stable number of fish. Um. But we, at the same time, we have a declining, um. Number of reds and we we're thinking that this is, um. Related to tributary conditions, years that. It's very dry, some of those fish can't make it, there's a physical. Dry piece of river that's a barrier to get to where they need to spawn. They could run into, um, temperature issues and. Some of those fish, they go up early and they spend the entire summer. In these small tributaries and the lower the water gets, more susceptible they are to predation, so. Fishing game, we have some concerns on on why we have this declining red count and we're doing some modeling studies to to look at that.
He just clarified for me, you said that the population in the lake is staying. Fairly the constant.
Yes, it's it's very stable.
So if the reds are declining, why isn't that eventually impacting the the lake population?
It may, but.
Is that just further off the chart, we haven't seen that yet?
That that's correct, and then and that's why we have concerns is. When is the lake population going to reflect what we're seeing in the red cards? Alright, so lastly, I I. Took, uh, a bunch of a bunch of data from the USGS gauge and. At first I I. Put in all of the lines and that made for quite a messy graph, so, um. What I did here is I put the minimum stream flow, which is the red line. You can see that it drops. And then it goes back up, um, in November, so. I took the average, this is the daily average flow, um. I took the average from the sixties through the eighties and that's the mean line, when I took the average from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-three. And what you can see here is that. The the line the line, um, that we have. In the recent years, I shifted to the left. Um, and so. The way that this is is graphed, the top is kind of cut off, but. It it's to emphasize these these amounts at the bottom, so historically. We were closer to minimum stream flow. Um, we had a later, more robust runoff. And the runoff. The runoff slope from peak flow to to low flow. Was less steep than it is now. Also. We had these summertime rains. Which. Kept the flow in rivers, at least fluctuating above minimum stream flows and back. In the last. Eight years, you can see that we've had very dry summers, we're lacking. Those summertime rains and lows are lower. Um, so to to illustrate fish use, um. This is when bull trout migrate. If you can see my. Cursor, we've got it, we we have a peak. Right here in May. And we call those early migrations. And then we have a peak right here in September, and those are the ones who are. Running late and then trying to run up, um, and run up to spawn, so. The ones that run up in May, those are the ones that stay in those little tributaries all summer long. Bull trout spawn, uh, September, October. Eggs are in the gravel from, uh, end of October, November. Through February, then we have bull trout hatching in March, we have juveniles that. They stay in the stream for one to three years and then they migrate out. So this is just one species. Um, I mentioned that we had native cutthroat and those large gerards as well. If you overlay those, you get a a big mess. The only difference is bull trout are fall spawners, um, those. Rainbows and cutthroat are spring spawners. So the pack river has fish constantly. Going in and out, and it's just, it's kind of like highway ninety-five these days, it's just a lot of traffic going back and forth. Um, so to recap. In in both the panhandle and the cleared up water, we're seeing a shift in hydrology. We're having warmer winters. Um, we're having our precipitation fall more as rain than snow, which makes for early runoff. Um, and then. We're we're having issues with summer and fall water availability. Um, this gives us some fishery and and fish habitat concerns with. We're seeing increased increasing water use and decreasing availability of water, um. On some of these. Systems where minimum stream flows are not being met. There's new water rights being imposed, um. During adjudication, we saw a lot of that, um, and still permitted where these stream flows are not being met. And in the north, we don't have water districts, um, and we don't require. Um, any way to measure or quantify water being used. Um. So solutions that we've we've been kicking around are continued collaboration, Clay mentioned. Uh, we've had that group that's working with OSCD, the tribes, DQ. Uh, IDWR, fishing game, and we'd like to continue to 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 brainstorm with those groups. Um, we want to gain a better understanding of the the water use and changing stream flow conditions. In basins that have these minimum string length rates and. We're doing that through these desktop, uh, evaluations like I I showed you. Um, we'd like to be able to collect more stream flow data. That gives us the data, but it also helps, um. Some of our fish biologists calibrate their their modeling better. Um, obviously, water right adjudication is going to help. Get all those water rights sorted out, administration and and possible curtailment on some of these systems where. Minimum stream flows are not being met, um, we need to do some. Um, in-stream flow studies for these key fisheries and these basins. Um, and then we'd like. In, um, ESA listed fish to be considered in some of these water like water. Um, right applications, um, where we have. Those fish. Um, so to summarize, North Idaho has always been thought to be water rich. Is is that still the case? We still have these big beautiful lakes. But from a fisher through a fisheries lens, it's the tributaries that are a little bit more important and the the condition of those tributaries. Um. We have examples of of doing this, um, through the Lenhi Agreement. We we don't have to reinvent the wheel on some of this, we've collaborated before and solved some of these problems for fish. Um, and we'd like to. Proactively work. Work to secure water for for the future. Um, so I'd I'd like to thank you again for inviting us today and I stand for questioning for me or for like.
Okay, any additional questions for fishing game?
Mr. Chairman. So. There's there's very little irrigation use or consumptive use on those sections?
Um, on on the pack, I. Yes.
Is there any of any irrigation on those other any other streams or yes?
I think there's a little bit more on on the Coeur d'Alene, uh, maybe on the Saint Joe, they they flow through. A little bit more ag land, but the pack comes straight out of the the mountains and then flows through what's. Basically just urban development, most of those are very small irrigation rights and domestic rights on the pack. I haven't done the complete analysis for all of the the. Northern Idaho minimum stream flows, but eventually I I hope to work through that.
Thank you, go ahead.
Chairman. You so you mentioned that. Mr. Mitten mentioned that, um, in the Palouse Basin, the Palouse Basin, the Potlatch. Basin, that spring valley reservoir is being looked at, being rained to be able to release cold water down the Potlatch River. In the summertime. What about the pack river? Is there an opportunity for fishing game to do anything, any high mountain elevation reservoir to release water down? Stream, because it doesn't sound like it's a with only nine CFS as. There's either a lot of illegal diversions. Or the water, it's just a climate issue.
Yeah, I and. So I, yeah, it could be, it could be drought, it could be climate, it could be a a little bit of water use. Um, but I've never, I've never considered that, I don't know if there's an opportunity for that or not, the upper end of the pack is mostly forest service. Um, and so it's just, it's it's seeing it's runoff early and just kind of running off out of water, so. Maybe there is a possibility.
Chairman, um, in reference to the bull trout, are there any hatcheries? That you have in operation to get help, uh, rare the bull trout?
Uh, we do have a a hatchery in the Clark Fork, um, it mostly rears cocaine, but, um. We. Honestly, haven't looked that far into it because. The population is very stable, if not increasing in the lakes. We're just concerned about with with lowering production in the tributaries, when are we going to start to see the change in the lakes, but. For the most part, the Pondure has probably one of the most stable, robust, um. Bull trout populations in the country, so. Um, we haven't got to the the hatchery question yet.
Uh, one more, in reference to the cocaine, now, is that hatchery still in operation? And then, uh, the cabinet for the cocaine, now every fall or November, you get the eggs and put them in there. So that's been ongoing. Uh, and but they, uh, fall right back into the lake, but June, July.
I'm not sure, you know. Exact, in July is when, so today, they stopped June, July and. And those cocaine are important because. All of all of our fish in in the Pondure depend on cocaine, um. For for food, they're they're kind of the. The moving smores for a a pond red. Right, so in that, in the pack river, there's there's not very many surface versions and. Most of it's up in the forest and there's not domestic impacts on those. Flow stream flows up there. Um. Have you done the, uh, the restoration efforts like the the neighbor dams and those kind of things to try to, you know, defer? Catch the, uh. Slow down the the runoff and screaming and, uh, make it later? We haven't, we haven't tried that yet, the pack, it's it's, uh. It's very rocky up there, um, but I think. You know, we could probably take a look at that, it's good idea. Something Forest Service wouldn't oppose probably anyway, if you if you did want to do some. Yeah, I think they they'd be helpful in it.
Chairman.
Yeah.
So you mentioned early discussion that there were some difficulties in these. Painful administrative efforts in trying to get involved in water projects. Can you can you give us a? An example or just your your recollection of how the department has dealt with. New water right applications and where they can play or not.
So so for example, in the Potlatch, um. Virtually, so there's. Ten point seven CFS carved out for non DCMI allocation.
So subordination.
And and so. Um. Virtually every application goes through and the only way. It's going to be looked at in the lens of this as if somebody else intervenes, right, so if I don't protest it, they're going to go through norm. Is essentially the way, um, it's currently working, so there isn't a consideration necessarily. Um, that the minimum stream flow isn't being met.
But that's because of, is that because of the? Subordination, the agreement they have thought up against whatever they see.
Well, it's it's true for even the DCMI, right, and so this is subordinate to those, so, um. Pretty much the only way. Um, that water is not going to be allocated unless it's us or somebody else protested, so. Um, the protest process, um. Is at least from our point of view, it puts all the responsibility on us, you know, we're the ones that are negotiating. We're the ones that are trying to come to an agreement and that. Um, and so one of the. Points on one merit slide was consideration of ESA fish and water allocation. That's out of the state water plant, right, so some of these things are supposed to be happening, and so, um. You know, that's that's where we included that as one of our ads.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Parker, I'll go ahead and just add to that, um, uh, we have, I think, some of the the IDWR staff. And, you know, in the the. Representing the board in these cases does coordinate with, uh, fishing game, uh, some of our staff. We also regularly review those new applications. Uh, to evaluate whether the board may have an interest in in submitting protests. And part of the challenge is asking that is evaluating whether the board has. Um, uh, an ability to protest if it could be the basis of that protest in a situation where there's a subordination card. Uh, um, where the, uh, evaluating. Um, again, what the what. What the ability for the board to, uh, protect those minimum stream flow water rights. Uh, outside of just regular water right administration, so again, the new water rights that are being issued have a priority. Priority date, and in theory, the the minimum stream flow water rights will be administered. Just like any other water right, and so that is the the challenge that IDWR staff, uh, like Michelle and others. Have in trying to, uh, in in looking at these new applications and placing any limitations on those, so. I think in some of our discussions with fishing game and others, uh, is we're just asking that question. What other options exist out there to try and, uh, um, uh. I guess help in a situation where we don't have water at water districts. Um, you know, would additional monitoring or measurement requirements help, would? Would questions like consideration of ESA listed species in a particular area? Be beneficial in that larger conversation with not just the Department of Water Resources, but all of the agencies and entities. Up there, so it's it's a larger question, much like the board is confronted in the upper salmon. And, uh, and that's, I think, uh, what what fishing game is trying to express here, they do, they do. Um, uh, put a lot of energy into reviewing these new applications and coordinate that with us, but. But our hands are tied, and as is the departments in in most cases, so. Think that gets this larger question, how do we, how can, uh, um, now that. Fishing game has identified some of these problems, are there any other tools that that, uh, can be? Can be utilized or identified to try and help with these questions?
Okay. Any other questions, Boyd? Thank you. We, we're all kind of, uh, struggling with. Uh, the water supply not being as robust as it was back in the sixties through the eighties, so it's a challenge statewide. Okay, and next up?
Next up.
Are we, we okay, everybody, for a little while?
I have a report from the Palouse Basin Office for Committee. And it looks like, uh, Mr. Palmer is.
Uh, Chair and Rabel, standing members of the board, happy to be here today, uh. To pull up my presentation, I'll, um. Go ahead and just start a little background, uh. We, uh, gave a presentation on March twenty-first to the Finance Subcommittee of this Board. Um, to discuss our progress in our search for a water alternative for the Palouse Basin. Um, uh, after that meeting, it was recommended that we come and provide this presentation to the entire board. Um, as you are all aware, uh, the board has, um. Committed a hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars for the furtherance of our work toward an alternative in the Palouse Basin, for which we are. Deeply grateful and excited, um, to be moving forward, uh. And so this is an update on where we're at and what we've been working on and and how we intend to use those funds in the furtherance of. In pursuit of a water alternative. So a little brief background, I know the members of the board are familiar with this, but for anyone who may be online or in the room that is not familiar, I'll just give a really quick and brief background of the history of the basin. Um. The the Palouse was largely settled in the late eighteen hundreds, um, at the time, Moscow, Poland, while there aren't any large bodies of water that flow. Directly through the Palouse, and so it might not be as intuitive a place. For the selection for both land-grant universities, Washington State University and the University of Idaho in Pullman and Moscow respectively. Um, the existence of artesian wells largely drove that decision. Um, the existence of Artesian wells largely drove that decision. There were very highly productive Artesian wells um, that were discovered. As you can see in this image, uh, this is a well in Pullman that was producing three million gallons daily. Um, but it did not take long for that water level to start to decline. Once those wells were tapped, um, in eighteen ninety one, there were ten flowing wells in Moscow alone. Um, by eighteen ninety seven, the stack level was down to eight to nine feet. Um, nineteen twenty three, down forty four feet, sixty two, one hundred and twenty feet. Um, in two thousand seven, about seventy five feet down to well two in Moscow. So obviously this is declining. Um, this is at this point, um, in Moscow, the wells were in the upper aquifer. We have an upper aquifer that's called the Wannapum and a deep rock for a public grand run. Um, the levels in the Wannapum in that time were going down as much as three feet per year. And so folks started to be alarmed and really started to work toward looking at alternatives. Um, so you can see here, this is just, just illustrates what has happened with the water level um, since the, like, since the eighteen nineties. Um, the upper aquifer, this is the Wannapum. Um, there are no major pumping entities in the Wannapum except the city of Moscow now. Uh, previously, all of Moscow and the University of Idaho's wells were in the Wannapum. Um, but now all of those wells are in the Grand Ron with the exceptions of wells two and three in Moscow, which are right downtown Moscow. Um, and the, the city of Moscow, what you, what you can see here on the graph is that there had been a continual decline until about twenty eighteen. In twenty eighteen, the city of Moscow back, backed off our pumping of the upper aquifer. Um, for a couple of reasons, we had some rehabilitation work that was being done on some filters. The upper aquifer is far higher in iron and manganese and requires more filtration, um, which also requires a lot of backwash of the filters. And so there's a lot more water loss, um, when we operate those wells. And it requires a lot more flushing of our system because of the iron flock that ends up in the system from those wells. Um, and we also had concerns about our impact on surrounding wells, the private wells that we have in the area, as those are all in the Wannapum Aquifer. And with that level declining, didn't want to get into a situation where we had well, private wells going dry with us as the only pumping, um, major pumping entity in that Wannapum. And so you can see that that, that offer has shown recovery, the, the city of Moscow backing off of the pumping of that offer. The lower aquifer, the Grand Ron, um, this is where all four major pumping entities, so Washington State University, University of Idaho, cities of Pullman and Moscow. Both universities have independent water systems. Um, so has seen a decline. Uh, that decline has diminished over the years. It used to be about a foot and a half per year. It's now down to about point, point six feet per year. Um, and so uh, point seven, I think, is our latest, maybe inch or point eight. Um, but we've seen a decrease in those decreases, but we continue to see a diminishing level in that, in that. And what we have is we have population growth. Uh, we know we have that. You know, the University of Idaho has luckily been bucking trends of late and has seen increases in enrollment rather than decreases in enrollment. Um, and the area is growing. Uh, we, we've seen the population grow. We've had very robust conservation programs. That's been something that's been heavily enforced and we continue to have more and more outreach in the conservation realm. Um, we think that's largely uh, what we can attribute the de, the decrease in our, in our aquifer level decline to those conservation efforts. Um, this graph shows that despite a thirty seven percent increase in population in Moscow and a forty two percent increase in Pullman since nineteen ninety three, we've actually have a three percent decrease in our pumping levels in Moscow despite a thirty seven percent population increase. And so the conservation efforts are working. There's still a lot more that we can do with conservation. But we continue to see a decline. And so we, we know that we need to develop alternate water supplies. We cannot be reliant on that sole source of water. This graph just shows the same thing in a different way. Um, so over the years, there were several serious attempts at trying to gen, to develop alternate water supplies. Um, the, one of the more recent ones was back in seventies, which is funny to say more recent, but it's the most recent of the very serious attempts. Um, there was a pump storage scheme that had been proposed on Union Flats Creek. Um, that actually moved forward and had some money in the Army Corps budget um, for developing this project because they're really concerned about hot power supply in central Washington at the time. And so this was seen as a way to kill two birds with one stone, build reservoir, have transmit some water up to the Palouse, and then also have the pump storage so that they could generate power as the need was there in central Washington. Um, this was a fell prey to as many large projects to do, a lack of public involvement. Uh, the first time a lot of farmers knew about this plan was when they saw a map with their farm underwater and they, they loved that. And so uh, there was a group called OPL. It was the Organization for the Preservation of Agricultural Land, a group of nine hundred farmers that got together and um, opposed this project. Um, and so with that, the effort kind of uh, fell apart and um, there's a funny little bit of history that I've included here later in the slideshow. So this was what was called the Pullman Moscow Water Resource Committee. It was, it was the precursor to Police Based Aquifer Committee, which is the group, the cooperative group through which we actively work on this. And this was a letter from the chair at the time. He said, this was when they were abandoning the project, uh, after it lost the public support and the political support um, with the, the farmers coming out against it. And so instead of a study committee, can't study the hell with it all. And with that, they disbanded the Pullman Moscow Water Resource Committee. Fast forward, there was an application for a well in Pullman, uh, the state of Idaho, um, considered declaring a critical groundwater management area. Um, and with, through that process, there was a groundwater management plan that was put together and PIBAC was reformed. And since then, we've been actively working toward a water alternative. Um, so in more recent history, we uh, conducted a water alternative supply study and looked at all of the potential sources for water against a fifty year demand horizon with additional thirty percent um, to account for what is estimated it will take to stabilize the aquifer. So that's the, that's the demand that's put together is the fifty, fifty year growth plus thirty percent water stabilization, aquifer stabilization. And put together a series of projects that could potentially meet that need, or at least some significant percentage of that need. And so we have uh, alternative one, which is pulling water from down in the Snake Clearwater region, somewhere down in the Elsie Valley area up onto the Palouse treatment and then distribution. We had alternative two that um, included some more local projects, some uh, regional intakes off the North Fork and Palouse River and South Fork and Palouse River or Paradise Creek. Alternate three, which involved the construction of a reservoir upon Flannigan Creek, um, direct use from the South Fork and alternative four, which was kind of more of a little money ball type approach that had several small projects um, on the South Fork, on Paradise Creek, um, water reuse. Um, so since this, this work was completed in twenty sixteen, we had a subsequent work that was done by, by a consultant um, to further refine these, so that we could take a look and work on prioritizing and pursuing these projects. Um, last time we spoke with the full board, um, there was a version of alternative four um, that was prioritized through a prioritization process. Um, and that was back in twenty twenty one. Um, since then, we have continued our work on refining these and taking a look at the, at that pro, at that project in particular. Um, and through the process of refining our numbers and looking at this, we, we've, we've had a few, we've had a few significant changes that have come forward. One is just, we've had some availability and, and um, gathered information on some of these tributaries and taken a harder look at the math on what is our bank for our block? Because it's really based, looking at ROI, looking at the cost per acre foot and looking at the, the amount that's available versus the amount of need. And as we further refine these numbers, um, we, what we found was that the availability wasn't as high and that the cost was likely higher than what was initially estimated. A lot of that had to do with when the water was available and the amount of water that was actually available. And then also, as you're well aware, we have the Palouse uh, river basin adjudication happening and we have some fairly significant tribal claims on all of the bodies of water that would be utilized in that, in that alternative. Um, and so that really shifted the um, the focus from that alternative. We held a meeting, a board meeting, discussed all of this, had our technical advisor present the information of that with the updated numbers on the cost per acre foot and some of the storage requirements and water, actual water availability, what we would actually be able to do. And also some refined numbers on the treatment necessities on some of these bodies of water. As you might suspect, when we can get into water is during some peak flow times when treatment is challenging. The, 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 the water quality is not good in, in some of these bodies during that period of time. Um, and so with that, um, the decision was made to renew our focus or to shift our focus toward alternative one, which was the second highest ranked alternative through the previous process. And then also to, we've, we've engaged with a consultant that performed our most recent work um, and provided them with the new data so that they can rerun the numbers and just verify the numbers that we've had our technical advisor run internally um, so that we can really formalize that process. Um, so currently what we're engaged in is the generation we've, uh, I should also mention that we had a joint meeting with the Idaho Division of Water Resources and the Washington Department of Ecology. Um, that was a very productive meeting where we just ran through all of these and had a very good conversation about priorities, obstacles, opportunities. Um, during that meeting, um, we were encouraged by the other division of water resources to, to take a good hard look at the Clearwater River. Um, with the idea that there, that may be a more likely um, source of water, um, for several reasons, including water rights availability. Um, obviously this for us is the most alternative one has the most upfront costs. The infrastructure cost is the most expensive. Um, as you might imagine, you know, pumping uphill fifteen hundred feet and uh, uh, ways to uh, the Palouse. Um, on a local scale, it's kind of hypopping, although when we talk to, for example, the Department of Ecology, when they look at it in the scale of what they paid for acre foot wall to wall, it just seems like a real bargain. And so the world of water, it's, as we all know, it can be expensive, but um, so uh, coming out of that meeting, we did some verification work. Um, we were provided with some documentation from IDWR. And so our, what we're proposing as the use for the hundred and eighty two thousand five hundred dollars is that we are preparing, in the process of preparing our queue for us to really start to refine this process. Uh, I think one of the challenges we've had on the Palouse is that there's been a, 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 some hesitation, I think, to spend real money to get real answers. And I think we're to a point where we've gathered all of the options and we're going to have to spend some money and get, get some real answers. And so we're, we're committed to keeping the ball rolling in a serious way and working toward a serious solution. And so we are working on an RFQ to get to the percent design necessary, probably around a ten percent design on this project so that we can start to ask the right questions, so that we can start to work with fisheries. We've had preliminary meetings with the NSPR's tribal council, um, start to work with the army corps, start to work through all of our groups, reengage with our state over engagement group, keep the public process going at the end of time. But it's a point where we can really vet this out and potentially make application for water right if, if that, if we're able to check all of those boxes. And so as we generate that RFQ, we'll be looking at the scope so that we can determine how far that hundred and eighty two thousand five will go from Water Resource Board. Um, and then augment that with uh, an ask from the state of Washington and then also with existing funds that have been contributed by the pumping entities that support to give me back, so that we can put together an adequate project to really move this forward. Um, with that, I'd be really happy to stand for any questions you all may have.
Questions? Dean?
So you're going to figure out how this works between Pullman and Moscow? Are you looking at, other than the city's supplied water subdivisions, any rural deliveries of that to other areas or are you, you got that far yet?
We haven't gotten that far yet, Commissioner. It, it's, it's a it's something that's been preliminarily discussed certainly. I mean, there, there'll be a lot to work out. I think, you know, really what we're trying to do is prioritize the, the hurdles that you've got here before we get to the next ones and really get us our, our preliminary hurdles is, is it technically possible? Can we get rights for it? Um, and so if it's technically possible, we can get rights for it, then we start to get into questions about, okay. And, and also how much does it cost? Is it feasible? And then we can get into questions about, okay, is, is there delivery to potlatch as the pipe goes past there? Is there, or excuse me, not potlatch, to, to uh, Genesee as the pipe goes by there? Um, what does it look like with the interstate issue? Do we run a pipe over Pullman or does it become an aquifer recharge where there's water that's brought up the hill and then recharge into the aquifer? And we come up with some sort of monetary agreement with the state of Washington. And so there would be a lot of those types of questions that would need to be answered. We're really not that far yet. We're on that preliminary step of you know, physically do it. Can we get water rights support and what's it going to cost?
Any questions?
Right. Chairman Tyler, um, so the, have you, um, I guess you talked to Avista about this, if it would, you know, have a, have a generation potential also is, are they, um, that they seem supportive of the power production part of it?
Mr. Chairman, remember, uh, almost that, uh, yes, we, we have been in, in discussions with Avista. Pump storage is something that they are again, looking at as a potential as they, especially as they try to meet some of the state of Washington's um, renewable energy requirements. Um, so they have some proposed studies for pump storage that they are moving forward with. And so we do continue to coordinate with them. Um, we have been, I would say careful not to intertie those projects. Um, I think in, in part because Avista's, a, a pump source project would require a significant amount of storage, obviously, and our project would not. And so there, there are some impacts on land that they would have inherent to their project that aren't necessarily inherent to ours. And so we don't want to put ourselves in the middle of a process that, that, that isn't ours. Um, but we also want to stay close communication so that if there is an opportunity for collaboration, we're aware of that.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, I know a lot of resource boards have been putting money into the studies. Along with Washington State contributing anything to, to the first studies?
Chairman Rabel, yeah, nevermind, some, uh, yes, um, of late, we have gotten far more support from the Idaho side in the last several years, last uh, four or five years. Um, historically, Washington has put more money into it, um, about at a two to one pace, um, than, than Idaho's historically, but of late, uh, Idaho has really been very supportive and helpful, um, largely because of the members of this board. Um, we are in active communications with the state of Washington. Um, and they understand that as we move forward in this process, there's an expectation of commensurate commitments coming from both sides. And I think that, and they've been, they've been helpful in helping us identify the best route through their processes. And the processes are a little bit different than the state of Idaho's. Um, quite frankly, a little bit more onerous, some of their processes. Um, but they have been cooperative and I believe, I have every reason to believe that there will be commensurate commitments as we report.
Uh, one more, uh, question. Is, uh, you're all on the same page with Washington and Idaho? What, how you going to proceed here?
Um, we, we are staying, we, we have, we have members of, of the Department of Ecology and the Idaho Division of Water Resources. Um, both serve on our, both our committee and our technical subcommittee. Um, and so we stay in close communication and then we have been scheduling higher level meetings with director level folks from each side and with our PIBAC leadership. Um, that's something that's going to be real important as we move through the process to make sure that we're all communicating and that everybody's on the same page. And so we've had recent meetings in addition to our normal PIBAC meetings, just to make sure that we maintain that high level of coordination.
So you as, uh, suspect a share of commitment from, uh, Washington and Idaho to move forward?
That's our expectation.
Thank you.
Uh, one question, just, and so in the water rights issue side back of the envelope now, is the project cheaper out of the Snake River as in this illustration or?
Very clear one. Um, it's, I suspect, I suspect that it's on the scope that we're talking about, it's probably relatively sixes. I think it will be slightly more expensive on the clear water side just because the grade is a little bit less friendly. You know, coming up through the Union Creek kind of drains, that's, that's a little bit more of a friendly grade to get up toward the Palouse. Um, and so there may be some, some more expense on the clear water side, but I, I don't think that we're talking any really significant difference in cost.
And operationally, soon how the water is sold down?
Operationally, we're lifting and treating the water. And so there's, there's not too huge a difference when it comes to O and M from that perspective.
Right. Just one follow up and your land would probably know more on this, but your present, you're charged a certain, a present rate for your water supply to your customers and and with this double it or triple it or have you looked at that part?
That'll be part of the financial piece that we'll really have to take a look at that. And some of that is going to be depend on the, the funding package that we're able to put together for the initial construction. Obviously, the O and M costly. We've got as cheap a water as wherever we're going to get right now. We're pumping it out of the ground by the water and eighty. We've got as cheap a waters wherever we're gonna get right now. We're pumping it out of the ground by like blurring eighty it. Minimally treating the water pump and then putting it in the pipe. So, so there there will be rate payer impacts. Um, so but we 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 don't have real clarity there. But that has been one of the reasons why it's been really important for us to work in concert on these projects. There's been a temptation to say, okay. We'll go it along, we'll build an Idaho project for the Idaho users, but the problem is in the Idaho rate pairs and it disproportionately bearing the burden of stabilizing the aquifer. And in our, the Washington side would just.
Congratulations, thank you very much.
They say, they say, good job, I'm also your water racer for the time because I, we appreciate it. So, so that's something we we, it's really been important that we work in concert for that very reason.
Right. Alright. I think we're good.
Thank you very much. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Alright, okay, well, I I think we're doing really well with our set of, so let's take a ten minute break, so we'll probably turn into fifteen. Then we'll be back here. Yeah, I don't know how warm it is. So, okay, that's a, um. So, I got some. Yeah.
Okay. Someone was meeting that in the quarter. Yeah, we talked, I forgot they were doing it, it's why it's down. Are we back on the record?
Yeah.
Okay, Nick, I am regional managers update. Michelle.
All right.
Or I guess you're walking one of us, huh?
Uh, yeah, well, Mr. Chairman and board members, thank you for having me. Um, I'm gonna run through this fairly quickly. Uh, as in the past years, I will go through what's happening in each of their regions. Each of the programs at Northern Region and then may our region priorities. So our organizational chart is actually looking much better than it has in the past few years. Happy to say that we'll be fully staffed uh in July, on July 8th. An engineer that we newly hired spinning up school and she'll be starting with us in early July. So that is a huge thing for our region to be fully staffed. That hasn't been the case since 2019. So super excited as counting how many positions that we've uh filled in the last 12 months. And uh we've actually put six new people in the positions. That includes promotions and new hires. So as for the North Idaho adjudication, Evan gave you a pretty good rundown. Um, as he said, IDWR has processed over eighty three hundred claims for the Clark Fork Landere River Basin adjudication. Also known as the CFPRBA. And we just had a a claim filing deadline last week as Evan had mentioned. And that did drum up similar claims taking and uh staff worked through that and then they're continuing to plug away on the the recommendations for the CFPRBA and Stafford on practice submitted director's report uh in this fall. As for the staffing, we promoted Chase Bell. Who was an adjudication agent to the water rights supervisor position. And so we filled the adjudication agent position again this uh February. And as a final note, we're eagerly anticipating the Kootenai River Basin adjudication. Uh, claims taking would likely start in early 2026. Uh, if the work pace is anything like it has been for the CFPRBA, uh, we'll, our staff will be spread thinly, but we are eager to adjudicate that final basin in Idaho. And I like to show this chart shows that the CFPRBA took in just over the the eighty three hundred claims. And then for the Blue River Basin adjudication, it was in the two thousand range. And we anticipate uh right around four thousand roughly claims for the Kootenai River Basin adjudication, so it'll be in between the two. This shows the applications for permit received by region and by calendar year for the whole department. And purple represents Northern. And as you can see, Northern continues to process the most applications for permit in the department. And one reason that is is our our region continues to have growth. And we also don't have any more authorities, as we know, in this region. Uh, or even though we are processing the most applications for permit, that activity is slowing down and I'll show that next. Our current intake uh for applications for permit is right in the two hundred applications range for the last twelve months. And then the prior two months or twelve months before that, it was in the six hundred range. And the prior twelve months, six hundreds during the CFPRBA. And during the PRBA, it was also in the two hundred range. So interesting and and we've learned as we've gone through these adjudications that claims and applications for permit go hand in hand and they increase together. So as we're fully staffed within the allocations group, uh, we uh are having time to catch up on licensing and beneficial use exams. We also continue to make progress on the Raffin applications. That stands for reasonably anticipated future needs and those are for municipal water providers to develop their twenty, thirty, forty year plans for their anticipated water rates. Those take months, several months, sometimes years to process. And we have two coming through the pipeline right now. Uh, should go into advertising in the next few months and permitted uh by this fall. And we also have Boundary County outreach happening. That's one day a month. It's a new effort that we've kicked off from the region. Uh, our first one was in April and uh it's been it's been good. Uh, it's good for the region to have a presence in the area. And you look forward to posting more of those. They're in Bonner's Ferry. Our wealth construction specialist Scott started in uh 2021, spending with us for three years now. And he has really good rapport with the drillers. The drillers know what they need to do to stay in compliance. And he has a a really good inspection rate, which helps the department meet its department-wide goal for inspections. So that program's going really well. Screen channel program is going similarly well. And uh the specialist has been in her position for over two years now. Uh, she's responsive to incoming applications and meets the sixty day turnaround time for permitting. Her inspection rate is seventy six percent, which also carries the department toward meeting its uh inspection rate goals. Uh, the photo here is showing that many of our restorations in Northern Region at least have a trend to use wood in the restoration project. This is on the Red Eyes Creek Tributary to Saint Joe River on some forest service land. And really it's just placing wood uh to slow the to slow the screen down and provide more aquatic habitat. Uh, throughout the sustained vacancy of the engineering position in Northern, uh, I've been squeezing in down inspections as well as others in the department, even the director has done some. And um we're keeping up with our inspections and we also have eight mine tailings empowerment structures in our region. Those are along I ninety near Wallace, Idaho. And uh that's part of our safety inspection program. And the new engineer, when she comes on board, will be a a really a a boost to that program. Hydrogeology staff are working to expand our region's monitoring networks. We can focus on Bonner and Boundary County. And as for the networks in Moscow and Lewiston, we've got twelve new monitoring wells. And nine of those have uh new pressure transducers installed. We also hired a mean hydrogeologist in April and she was helping with these activities. And I want to give you a snapshot of how each of the aquifers are doing in our region. So this uh will take a little bit here, but uh I'll start with Lewiston and the three aquifers there. So the Grand Ron Aquifer in Lewiston continues to decline at a faster rate than it was relative to this time last year. And current rates of decline in the uh Lewiston Orchards area is three point three feet per year. And I know Lewiston Orchards Irrigation District is working on an alternative uh to alleviate the groundwater pumping and instead use Clearwater River as a source to fill Man Lake. That is in the works, I believe, and is is a positive thing, so. The water pump offer in Lewiston is fairly stable. Uh, it does actually have improvements observed and that may be due to some changes, some changes in practices from the city of Lewiston. Those may be temporary. We don't know. And then finally in Lewiston, the Saddle Mountain Aquifer has had a small decline of point two feet this last year. So as for the Palouse, the water pump offer is stable due to, as Tyler mentioned, the the shift in use from the water pump to the Grand Ron. So the Grand Ron in the Palouse area, uh, we have it as running one foot per year. Uh, it had been point eight feet per year for our measurements, so that's a little bit faster decline right now. Um, but we're encouraged by the Blue Space and Officers Committees' work to focus on an alternative to address that decline.
Oh, question.
Yes, Michelle, is it, it, I think it's important to point out that the Grand Ron in the Palouse is not the same, is divided between the Grand Ron and the western area.
Very true, very true. I wish everybody, yes. And the Spokane Valley Raffin Prairie Aquifer is in good shape with no present inspections.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
You think guys, because of the official management plan is put in place where it's Spokane, Spokane. Remember we did that ten years ago.
Um, it's, it's it gains recharge naturally from precipitation and it's a cyclical recharge. Um, it's about ready to, it's currently slightly declining actually, but with a good precipitation year would be in a normal cycle, so. There may be some practices from the management plan that are helping. I think it might be worthwhile to revisit that management plan.
Mr. Chairman, that was the first one, right?
I think the ESB can.
Well, hopefully this one, but we'll work better. Maybe you have some advice to the ESB.
Uh, yeah, I see you. No, that's okay.
Don't dig out more than you're putting in.
Mr. Mr. Chairman. Michelle, uh, representative of Raffin Aquifer, but all that Raffin journey being gobbled up by development. So is less water being used now because of development, because the farmer's not irrigating. I did it when it was all in the farm ground, so you see some changes there from development might use less water than what the farmers were using?
That could be possible. We haven't looked at that closely. That is a possibility.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, absolutely. So for regional successes, the adjudication group is mostly done with claims taking for the CFPRBA and well underway with claims recommendations. And with the slowing down of applications for permit and improved staffing, staff members are settling into their new roles and developing new processes to tackle ongoing workload and address issues that have needed a bit more attention as we have been stretched pretty thinly during the CFPRBA. And our outreach stays and Bonner's Ferry are off to a good start and really serve to establish a presence in the community prior to an adjudication in the area. As for the challenges, the biggest one is the declining aquifers. And those are in the Lewiston and Palouse areas. And we are encouraged though uh um to see the efforts that are being made by Lewiston Orchard Irrigation District and by Blue Space and Aquifer Committee to solve those problems and address, address those issues. As for next steps, adjudication will continue to found out recommendations uh toward director's reports will process allocations filings as they come in. Uh, growth is still happening. We'll continue to process the Raffin applications uh for water providers, spend our hydrogeologic monitoring and continue the public outreach in Boundary County and elsewhere. And with that, I would take And with that, I would take any questions.
Questions.
Go ahead. Michelle, are any of the Raffin applications in um some of the tributaries that Fish and Bean presented to us earlier today?
The Raffin applications that we're seeing are all in Basin ninety-five on the Raffin Prairie. Aquifer.
Questions?
Being this chairman. When you're looking at doing the Kootenai, that's the next one, the adjudication. You have an idea of the number of claims that would be there or?
Yes, uh, projected to be around four thousand planes.
Basically, that's what it is.
Are any of those surface diversions or are they most likely to be the? Wells?
I don't know the breakdown between surface and groundwater.
We've broken it down. Too much yet. There's a lot of a lot of surface water diversions down in the valley. Around that area, um, but a lot of well use farnger up. A lot of what we've seen just in a lot of those those drainage districts is getting water off the field so that they can just rather than applying it. So there's actually a significant amount of dry land. Farming applications and then the the city system. I know, uh, I was just reaching out there looking at it. That's a a well system and we have recently applied for it and to expand a well system. Um, so cabinet, uh, cabinet mountain water associations, I believe, is working right now. They supply about twenty thousand people right now and then. It'll be expanding that system because the the growth is happening in that area also to advance about that. That's that's what your larger water users out there and that's how. I drove through yesterday. There's a lot of growth. And it's it's been staggering like it is.
Yeah, and I'd say as far as growth, the the high interest rate. Slowed growth down a little bit. But now it seems to be picking up again.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Michelle, in regards to the Kootenai River up there, well, that comes out of Canada through Montana in the. Boundary County, then accidentally out in the cannon. So is there going to be issue with Canada? Involved in the adjudication up there?
Um, from what I've heard from uh Judge Wellman is. We will adjudicate the elements of the water rights that are in our state. And leave the other parts of the elements. To, you know, the Canada. So if we don't see it as a problem, we've handled uh. Adjudications across the, you know, state boundaries in the same way, so. That's what's anticipated. We don't, we don't perceive major difficulties.
And I know those, the Columbia River Three. Involved Canada. And I don't, that has not been resolved yet, so. Uh, I don't know how that will play out. Down the road. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh. Chairman, just a couple of observations. First, uh. Yeah, we've already adjudicated with a foreign country. We have the communication through the organ.
Say that again. What country was that?
But I just wanted to tell Michelle to make sure that she passes this along to the staff. I my experience in. Dealing with the staff, uh, your your staff have always been very professional and very helpful, so. I just wanted to give them a pat on the back.
Thank you.
Yeah, it sounds like you're carrying uh. Uh, some of the inspection stuff, uh. Carrying water for. Uh, other parts of the state, so. You'd like us to take that message to them. They need to gin up. Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, next we have the Priest Lake Outlet Dam operations update.
Yeah, um. Do you want to lead this off or is?
Yeah, just an introduction for those two. Um. Uh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, so I think this leads us into a couple of presentations that will set the stage for your, you know, feel you're this afternoon. Uh, for the Priest Lake Dam. So we'll give Michelle just a breather here, but uh. So so I think so we have Kara and Michelle, who um, uh, again, they're going to give you a couple of presentations and then we'll be headed out to. To the dam where I'll hear a little bit more about the the construction and some of the other activities directly on site. But just want to remind the board that uh. You, of course, had a couple of projects on Priest Lake over the last couple of years, and in two thousand twenty-one, the board completed construction and improvements to the to the thoroughfare breakwater structure. Um, that's at the north end of the dam and it manages sediment transported from the upper priest slate. Through the thoroughfare down to the lower lake. And it also provides protection for landowners at the north end of the lake, uh, from any damage due to wave action and that sort of thing. Um, the board is now completing modifications and improvements to the Priest Lake Outlet Dam. And those improvements were intended to provide more flexibility to manage lake levels downstream, well, lake levels themselves and also uh uh. River flows downstream. The idea was to allow for that flexibility so it could be managed more effectively based on different types of water supply conditions and particularly during dry years. So when that project began, uh, the water, part of the water resources actually owned the facility. Um, but in two thousand eighteen, the legislature modified Idaho Code. Uh, and in order to move control of the structure over to the water board. And that includes responsibility for ongoing maintenance and and operations. And for regulation of the water surface level of priest lake. Uh, that legislation also modified, uh, the authorized lake levels again to allow for that operational flexibility. When water supply in the lake is considered dry or marginally dry. So again, we'll have presentations here from uh from Kara Ferguson, uh, who's a staff hydrologist at IDWR. And from Michelle Richmond, our regional manager, who also, in addition to everything she just described, also provides direction to the. Uh, to the board's uh dam operators. Uh, and they'll be talking about how the facility will be managed going forward, what they're doing now and uh. And how they'll manage going forward, very, um, based on the various issues, the interests that that influence operations. Um. So Kara will speak to methods of forecasting water supply conditions and Michelle will uh. Um, speak about the operations themselves and how we coordinate those forecasts. As well as the physical operation of the dam downstream. And uh, I I think you'll find that interesting because they've been gathering information in the last couple of years, even through the construction process. And are trying to anticipate how to use this going forward, particularly since we have the balance interest. Um, by recreationalists and lake, um, lake resident owners and as well as interests uh in the river downstream. So then this afternoon, again, we'll travel to the dam and Mike Morrison, who's been the project manager over the construction, will uh. Highlight some aspects of the project and the improvements that have been made. We can talk in more detail on site and we may have a few additional attendees. I think our dam operators are going to join you. Uh, we may have the contractor who finished the recent construction. We'll see. Looks like he's not going to make it, but uh. It might represent that well. And uh, and maybe some other interest groups who are familiar with uh how things have been uh unfolding. And have been tracking some of the issues, both of the lake and and the the river downstream, so. But that will turn it over to Kara.
Welcome, Kirk. Here.
You know, um, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Cynthia, thank you for that introduction. It is a privilege to be here today and um I appreciate this opportunity to share with you the uh hydrology. Surface water groups and involvement in how he provides support and guidance. Uh, for the outlet dam operations. Um. So this is a a little bit of a a joint um presentation here. Um, I'm going to start things off, as Cynthia mentioned, um, uh, discussing the hydrologic considerations for operations. Uh, then Michelle will follow up with other key considerations for operations. Um. Uh, operations of the modified dam, uh, two thousand twenty-four operations, some of the next steps and conclusions. So, uh, as Cynthia has stated, in two thousand and eighteen, the Idaho Code seventy-five oh seven uh was amended. And um, it stated, I just have two, um, really just two parts here that I wanted to point out. Um, um, the amendment specifically states that the water surface level of priest lake shall be maintained at three feet. During the recreation season, when the water supplied to priest lake is plentiful, meaning abnormal to wet years. And between three feet and three point five feet uh during the recreation season. When the water supplied to priest lake is lacking, meaning dry and marginally dry years. So um, the inclusion of the type of water here. Um, uh, really has has changed um hydrology's involvement and um. And how, and it really just at the heart of what we're considering is hydraulic um considerations. Uh, so there are several considerations that we we look at and they kind of play into each other. Um, and are tied to one another. So uh, we have considerations such as basin conditions. Uh, which really looks at uh stream flow and snowpack. Those uh play into the water supply forecast uh for for the area, um, which then also uh gives us information on. Um, inflow timing and um where we would need to keep the minimum lake level. And also provide some information on the field guidance. Um, so each of these uh, each of these components, um, really, as I mentioned, tie into one another. And some of them, such as basin conditions, the uh water supply forecast and minimum lake level, we're looking at all year round and uh providing Michelle information, but. Uh, the critical times are in the dark green, um, where we are giving um uh up-to-date um information, um, especially in the in the fills. In the fill season or runoff and filling of the lake, um, right now, but sometimes daily um support is provided. So, um. The next slide here. So, um, so for basin conditions, um, uh, really, uh, what this is looking at, uh, we consider, um. Uh, as I mentioned, this, this is considered stream flow, uh, snowpack and even the lake level. Um, and so I just wanted to give you a provider of the map to show you uh some of the locations. Of the uh, some of the historical sites and the current sites that we have used. Uh, for our basin considerations and um historically for our the water supply forecast. So originally, uh, uh, the uh. Priest River near Dickinson Chee Campground, uh, this one, you can see with my cursor here. Uh, kind of more of the mid-basin. Um, this was about uh four miles um downstream of the outlet dam. That was in operation from nineteen forty-eight to two thousand and six. Um, I believe it washed out. Um, when we did not have that gauge available, um, we uh looked at information at the Priest River near Priest River Gauge, which is. Um, much further down in the system and um to back up and 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 point out that this map is really showing the full. Uh, a a Priest River basin boundary that's in in red and the blue uh is uh just the, what would be considered the Priest Lake basin boundary. So uh, the Priest River near Priest River, um. Gauge, uh, US GS Stream Gaging Station, uh, is much further down in the Priest Lake basin. It's actually very close to the confluence of the Priest River and the Ponderay River. But we utilize that information that provides a lot of historic information, especially during the data gap. Um. There was a new station that was installed just um downstream, probably about a half mile downstream of the outlet dam. Uh, that was put in in two thousand and sixteen and we look at that um currently. Uh, we also um have had the Priest uh Lake, which uh measures the water level and what we are, that we look at to to maintain the um code and. Uh, for what our lake level is. Um. And then there are two uh snow telemetry uh stations that are um monitored by the N R C S. Uh, we have one. Here on the eastern side of the basin is Hidden Lake. Um, and then in Washington is Bunch Grass Meadow. And um. So now I'm going to transition into looking at the current year's uh conditions and how they uh have impacted uh the hydrologic considerations. So. Uh, we're going to specifically look at the two snow tell sites. Uh, we have. A bunch grass meadow here and this is the uh snow water equivalent or sui graph for this hotel site. And uh, for those of you that are not familiar with this, um, this graph, I'll I'll just point it out. Uh, we have um. This year's uh, the date on the bottom and then the uh snow water equivalent. Um, in inches here for the the Y axis. And this is basically informing us of how much water is in the snow pack. Um. Uh, the the black line indicates conditions for two thousand twenty-four. Uh, and we also have information on the historical maximum, which is the purple line, and historical minimum, the red line. The green line in the middle is the thirty-year median. And the shaded areas are just the statistical very uh kind of red points um for the uh different probabilities. So. As you can see with this black line, um, uh, we have um maintained a bunch grass. Uh, really below average conditions throughout the entire season and. In fact, um, in late uh December, early January timeframe, we had a record low sui. Um, there are seventeen days of of uh record low sui. We hit the peak uh sui on April tenth, um, and that was just eighty-two percent of the median. So again, um. Below average conditions at Gunst Grass Meadow. Um. Looking at Hidden Lake, the story is very similar. Um, again, a little bit higher, but we, uh. Little bit higher in the amount of um uh sui or or snow accumulation. There, but still uh tracking uh below average for the year. And it too uh saw some record low sui days, about fifteen days. Um, and the peak sui uh for this station was also on April tenth. And was at eighty-nine percent of of average. So. Uh, I have uh historically used this information to provide a water supply forecast, um. For for the upcoming season, really the amount of um water in the snowpack. Uh, translates into how much water will be available during runoff and to fill the lake and maintain um outflows. Um, and uh, I've utilized the N R C S's um water supply forecast for the. Priest River at Priest River in the past, but new this year, um, I've worked closely with um people at um N R C S. And they um have now begin providing. A stream flow volume forecast for the Priest River. Outflow near Coolin. So that is the the forecast point is really at that string gauging station, then the newer station just downstream of the dam. However, this forecast isn't really forecasting the outflow. It's it's really uh forecasting the inflow. It takes into consideration. The lake level changes as well as outflow. And uh, they provide monthly outlook reports, um. And uh, I promise that there will be uh reports available in March, um, April and May. And this year, I believe they've even been able to provide one in February. Um. And that is really helpful and gives us some guidance as to how much water to expect for the um season. They provide um. A forecast for two different periods. We have the May through July period and the May through September. Uh, May through September, we're very interested in because that basically frames the recreation season. Um. This is directly from their um Idaho Water Supply Outlook Report, so he's just a copy. Uh, picture of the 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 front of that report and inside uh shows this chart and. They provide not just a single number, but a range of uh what they call forecast exceedance probabilities. This is for risk intervention and uh this um, this range allows us to look at uh potential future conditions. To help determine where we think um the the forecast might fall. Um. Uh, they have it from ninety percent exceedance, which would be considered, you know, more of the drier future conditions or some of the driest future. More of the drier future conditions or some of the driest future conditions. Um seventy fifty percent would be about average. Um and then if we were to anticipate weather conditions. Possibly looking at the thirty or ten percent even um for their forecast range. Uh so they have uh this range that they provided. Um uh goes from three hundred and twenty-five. Half um all the way up to uh five hundred and eighty cap. So when we get um these forecasts, we really have to utilize other information. To help inform us as to which um exceedance probability we may want to look at. Uh to uh to determine. The type of water year. Um so we can utilize other other information from other agencies. Um. So the uh the Idaho Drought Monitor uh currently has modern Idaho camera as as moderate drought conditions. And we've been in drought um moderate and even um reinforced drought um in the recent past. Um. So we take that into consideration. We also can look at the National Weather Service three-month outlook. Um and have here um these. Uh these maps down here. This shows the seasonal temperature outlook as well as the seasonal precipitation outlook for this June, July and August timeframe. And this um just shows this this color shade in here for Idaho. Uh is is showing for the temperature outlook that there's about a fifty to sixty percent chance that. Uh temperatures during this timeframe will be above average. Um and then looking at the precipitation, um i- indicates that there's about a forty to fifty percent chance. That um uh precipitation will be below normal. So taking that into consideration, we have determined that we really should utilize. Some of the pro- the uh exceedance probabilities for maybe the average to a drier conditions. Um. So this next, um so this next chart I have here, there's. A lot going on, a lot of numbers that are kind of uh hard to read, but uh really what you're seeing here. Is uh plotted from the highest to lowest for the. May through September stream flow volume. And this is from nineteen fifty-one through twenty twenty-three. And uh they're just plotted by rank, so from the highest to the lowest. Um and then we have um within this, we have these categories um that help direct us as to. What what the minimal lake level should be during the the recreation season, the wet, normal, dry and very dry. And I have plotted on here um the difference forecast exceedance uh with the. With the what most with the wetter conditions being here at the top, this would be the 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 ten. Uh thirty percent um and at the bottom would be very dry conditions, uh the ninety percent exceedance. Uh I've shaded here the fifty to seventy percent forecast range because uh we've determined that that would likely be. Uh the most uh possible future conditions. And how we use this chart to determine then what type of water year we anticipate coming up or. For the season uh is where this green shaded area intersects these black line. And you can see where that intersects here. Um it's gonna be dry category. So this helps inform Michelle uh where she needs to have operations. And based on Idaho statute, that would be in the three to three point five feet consideration. So um. So with that, um this information gives us a lot of in this information gives us a lot of details as to the amount. Um. And but it doesn't really give us any information on timing of when this water is gonna show up. So. Uh one of the other things that we provide um is some information. On the the field guidance or so this would be taken into consideration runoff. And how to bring the lake level um to that that minimum um level that is uh determined by statute. Uh so we have a couple of different uh operations scenarios. Um and both of these are based off of either very dry or dry years. And what you're looking at here. Um are hydrographs for the the lake levels, that's in green. Um as well as the um outflow conditions at uh Priest River. Near Coolin. And the black dotted lines um indicate when operations began for each of these years. So. Um. So in two thousand and nineteen, um the operation uh took place. Uh had to we uh that actually wasn't Michelle's time, uh but what we had to do um is. It was very dry here. Uh we uh already categorized that and watching the lake level as of about um. You know, in early May, uh we were barely uh reaching um not even up to two feet at that time. So we knew um that we needed to start operations to start bringing the um lake level up to the three feet. Uh to have it in place by Memorial Day, which typically um. Uh as at the start of the recreation season. So you can see that operations began to bring it up um with a little. Above that that three-point mark, but without um those operations, um the the way that it was coming off that year and the timing of runoff. Uh may not have brought it up to the three feet on its own. Um now, another scenario which took place in uh two thousand and twenty-three. Uh still categorized as a dry year, looked a little bit different. Um in uh early, early May. Uh things were coming off quickly. We were exceeding the two-feet mark and um. Actually, we're already at about three feet. And this um this year, uh natural runoff brought the lake level uh well above four feet. Um and really then the uh operations began to to catch the lake. Level after that peak flow and then maintain it um at that minimum lake level based on statute. So two. Two very different scenarios there. So um. What I've described to you are different ways that we help um uh. Uh Michelle so that um she can make some operational decisions. Um I wanted to just point out some of the challenges that um go into our our forecast. Um. And uh and other issues, but mostly with the forecast. Um. We have limitations. Um not having any outflow data right below the dam. Uh between two thousand and six and sixteen has uh limited. Um our uh ability to to create those those forecasts. I think the NRCS does a. A great job of missing that information during that time period, uh which is a pretty critical time. Uh uh makes it um more challenging. Um also. Uh within the forecast, um w- we haven't quite determined. There is a little bit of the evaporation piece that's baked into it. But um different um summer um summer weather patterns uh can really impact the amount of evaporation. Um also, uh how multi-year drought um impacts operation is not really considered for the the forecast. Um. And then again, as I pointed out, the the forecast uh is really more of a volume and doesn't provide. Much information as far as the melt and inflow timing. So we. Really do our best to provide that information to Michelle. Um we also have uh some ve- variable conditions. Um that can make these uh, you know, this this information, these hydrologic considerations are challenging. Uh and and really not having any measured real-time inflow is probably one of our biggest challenges. So the the forecasts that we provide and and the information that I provide to Michelle. Uh during the season are really um after the fact. We are looking at outflow conditions and lake level changes. Uh from the the previous days to help inform Michelle and then she can make decisions. So. Uh we really are feeling that if we had a a a real-time inflow uh on one of the tributaries, um. Uh might help uh bring some, you know, reduce the uncertainty in the inflow information we're providing to Michelle. As she makes her operational decisions.
Question?
It looks like the Bunch Grass Hotel Site is on a ridge. Is?
Yes, and um I believe it's, um I don't know exactly, um sorry, Mr. Chairman, um or we were uh. Um I believe it's uh close to the summit, uh maybe on the other side. So. It is definitely showing just conditions, you know, for that, basically that elevation zone and for that mountain.
I guess my question is, does all the water from that snow flow site flow into the lake? Or does it some of it flow the other way?
Um uh. That uh it would go both. Um and so, yes, we really use the information from this hotel site as kind of a proxy as to the amount. Of of water, but we're not necessarily utilizing uh the information um to state that all of that water will end up there. But we can um definitely create relationships between the data at this hotel site and then the runoff that we've seen historically.
Just an observation on that. At Bunch Grass, it looks like the thirty-year median is. A little lower than in the middle of the all-time minimum in the last. And on the other one, let's see, I don't know, hidden, it's more in the middle. So it looks like. Uh in the last thirty years, that bunch grass is been getting less. Uh than than the other side of the lake, the other side of the valley.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's a great observation. Um the Bunch Grass Meadow also has a longer um. A period of record. And I believe I may have um got them flipped as far as the dates on there, but um that one was installed in nineteen seventy-nine. And so we might be seeing more of a a trend there where the hidden lakes on the east side was um. Um much later than that one was.
That would explain why.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. We'll leave you alone here.
All right. Thank you so much. We'll transition into uh Michelle.
Chairman Regal, board members, thank you for having me uh talk about this topic as well. Um all the science that goes into Kara's analysis. Really helps to translate varying conditions from one year to the next and one day to the next into an actual gate upward operation right now today. Um it can be challenging at times, especially when we've had record-breaking conditions in the past couple of years. And I will echo what Kara said about the. Uh the source of information that would be very valuable to have would be the uh the real-time inflow data. And. Again, Kara's inflow calculations are for yesterday. So we don't have anything for today. And uh the. The likely candidate for a tributary to have a stream flow gauge measurement on would be Granite Creek. And this is a photograph of Granite Creek where it crosses Reader Bay Road near northern Idaho. That's located thirteen miles north of the dam on the west side of the lake. It would just enable us to react more quickly to very quick changing conditions in spring. Um in addition to the hydrology input from Kara. We gather input input from uh two local dam operators who have eyes on the dam every day that you'll meet shortly. Today, we also take into consideration statutory obligations and water right administration. As well as the board's Priest River Basin Planning Document. Stakeholder input and um I'll start with the water rights.
So, Mr. Chairman, so how often do you have experience? Extreme variability, some of it is just. Maybe you're gonna have a big water, I mean, a big rain event, but that's gonna change everything then. Is that the new issue that you got?
Yes, uh we have. We have the potential to have great variation when we have rain on a snowy dance. And. Yes, yes, and. The other thing that could really change things quickly is is a fast heat up. So having these hot weekends, hot hot days. Uh and cool days makes things can really vary from day to day. So I will jump into Idaho Code again, seventy dash five oh seven. Uh really says that uh. The lake level may exceed three feet during spring runoff. But as soon as we've got the lake stabilized after that spring runoff, then that's when we need to hold the lake between three and three and a half feet. And the recreation season is considered to start Memorial Day weekend, which is right now. Um but again, we're waiting for spring runoff. So until we've had spring runoff and we're sure that we've. Uh got that handled, then then we can hold the lake between three and three and a half. Outside of the recreation season. We're holding the lake between point one and three feet. So that's statute. And then next we have the Governor's Storage Water Right, which has a nineteen twenty-seven priority date. And allows for a hundred thousand acre feet of recreation storage. And then uh when statute and the governor's water rate have been met. We then uh look to the board's minimum stream flow water rates. That has a nineteen ninety-seven priority date. And it's a stair-stepped water right. It won't go into all the uh flows. But the lowest one. Is three hundred CFS and that's from August to October each year. And that's measured at the Priest River near Priest River Gauge, which is about twenty miles as the probe lies south of the dam.
So is there an introductory include between Priest Lake and that gauge at Priest River? I mean, it releases from Priest River the only thing to meet that. There are other, there's other anything.
Yes, there are. Although I would say the dam often contributes. Seventy-five percent or more of the flow. And then the the next uh form of guidance is coming from operations agreements from when Washington Water Power. Operated the dam for the state of Idaho. And there were agreements in place that the dam was not to have. Uh less than sixty CFS of discharge going through it during summer. So the Priest River Basin Plans, the next form of guidance. That we look to and it was established in nineteen ninety-five and it was updated in two thousand and three. And that plan establishes guidance for gradual fall releases, not to exceed twelve hundred CFS per day. And for example, if we do an operation. For six hundred CFS in the morning. Uh which we do sometimes, then we would be limited to another six hundred CFS. A a second time that day. Uh let's see, it also contains somewhat conflicting guidance regarding the timing of fall release. So per the plan, fall release must not start before October first. And then this is in quotes. I'm reading from the plan, if possible, the the release will not commence until the second weekend. In October. To support fall clientele at the resorts on the west side of the lake. However. It also indicates the level of Priest Lake would be at or near its natural level by the time company responding commences. In early November. So the amendment um. Also has language about fishing game as to supply data to support the date to achieve the natural lake level by. Um and that appears to be a loose end that needs to be updated. However. A nineteen seventy-two report by Fishing Game clearly suggested that the date to complete that drawdown by is November first. And it's worth noting that the lake will drop below point one feet. Um. If we allow it to, but per statute, we're holding it at the point one feet minimum. And I'll show later in the presentation how delaying fall release past October first. Would likely prevent the lake from reaching point one feet by November first. I'll get to that later on. And then as as far as. And then as as far as uh further guidance, given we've satisfied all of the guidance so far, we're then looking to incorporate stakeholder feedback. And we gather inputs from uh some of our partners, Department of Environmental Quality, the Priest River Watershed Group, Fishing Game, Lakes Commission, and Resorts, Residents, and others. And so the lake-related issues coming from stakeholders often involve things like uh lake level and docks, recreation on the lake and beach drainage, and then timing of the drawdown. And then we're balancing that with river-related concerns, and those are involving things like the board's minimum stream flow water rate, temperature and flow of water in the river, fluctuation of river flow, and fish passage through the dam. So our goal is to manage the system as a whole. It's the lake and the river is one entire system. And we're continuing to gather um stakeholder feedback, incorporate that into our learnings and uh have everything guide our future operations decisions. We also try to stay in communication with uh other agencies and stakeholders. And pretty much uh they're the same folks that we're gathering information from, and then I'll add to that list the Albany Falls Dam staff. So we're informing uh them about our fall and spring operations. And then we also post our information on our IDWR webpage as well as our Facebook page. So Kara spoke about spring operations, and are we filling the lake? Are we bringing the lake level up? Are we catching it on the way down? Once everything's stabilized, then uh then we have to transition to summer operations. And per statute, again, we're we're maintaining that three to three and a half feet lake level. But it's not as simple as just establishing a lake level and leaving it alone for the rest of summer. It's a dynamic system. It responds to all kinds of different factors such as uh summer temperatures, wind, precipitation, and humidity. And the big picture is if the inputs and outputs are out of balance, the lake level will change, and it can happen quickly. So as the diagram shows, inputs include precipitation, surface runoff, and streaming flow. And then the outputs include the Priest River output flow through the dam and evaporation and possibly seepage. So traditional operations involve setting the lake to a particular level and then making gate operations to counter any fluctuations in the lake level as reactive. And before the dam was modified, that set point had to be three point zero feet every summer. So as you can imagine, on a hot day uh with very little flow into the lake, high temperatures, wind, evaporations are a large factor. And to counter that, the lake, to counter if the lake is dropping due to evaporation, the traditional approach would be to close the gates down and slow that flow down into the river. Stable stabilize the lake in that way. However, the newly modified dam enables a new strategy that allows for um a way to diverge from those traditional operations. Now, I'll show you how that goes. So here is the the gate height increase of six inches is shown by the yellow arrows. And it was actually in place by twenty twenty-two, even though the dam wasn't complete, that part of it was in place that year. And it was implemented to all eleven gates. And let me go into the years twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. We've had two years with this gate height increase now. And this hydrograph shows uh flow going through the river or through the dam for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, somewhat busy of a graph, but if you focus on the two blue circles, you can see uh that twenty twenty-two on the left has a much different flow pattern through the dam than twenty twenty-three on the right. In twenty twenty-two, the goal was to set the lake level to three point two feet and maintain that lake level throughout summer. Um and we use that traditional approach. When temperatures and evaporation increased, we closed the gates to try and hold that lake level at three point two feet throughout the whole summer. And then this led to a lot of variation in the river flow that summer, and the low was a hundred CFS. Then in the summer of twenty twenty-two, we used a different approach. We started the lake at three point four feet. And instead of holding the lake to that three point four the whole summer, we allowed evaporation to bring the lake level down. And we we really had minimal gate operations the whole summer. And so in two very hot weeks, with some land wind, evaporation kicked up and the lake level dropped point one feet each of those weeks. So it was it was quick. And uh the extra reserves in the lake, however, allowed for the decline in in the lake level, which was still meeting statute. And due to this new approach, fluctuation in the river was minimal through the dam. And uh the flow was one hundred and eighty CFS and pretty consistent all summer. So in a nutshell, the gate height increase enabled this new approach when it's paired with the statute that allows for a range of accepted lake levels. And it provided a tool to keep more flow in the river while maintaining the lake level for recreation. So in this way, it strikes a balance between the river interests and the lake interests, which is a positive outcome. So for twenty twenty-four, we brought the lake level up, uh still working to stabilize it, waiting for spring runoff. But the goal is to stabilize it at three point four to three point five feet early in the summer. And then as we did for twenty twenty-three, allowed evaporation to drop the lake level while aiming to preserve flow in the Priest River. As the recreation season comes to a close, we'll then transition to fall release. And I'll discuss that next. So this is the quote from the lake level statute that reads, "The lake level shall be held until the time after the close of the main recreation season as determined by said board prior to releasing it below three feet." And as you can see, the language is broad and allows for varying interpretations of what the end date is. In twenty twenty-three, drawdown was initiated on October one, and in that same year, we reached point one feet by November one. This is how twenty twenty-three looked. So the top graph shows flow through the dam, bottom graph shows corresponding lake level. And we started the fall release on October one. Dam operators were doing three changes, three gate changes per day from October one to October sixth. It was quick. We were hurrying to get things done for the construction. And so the dam operators had the gates out of the water October sixth. Gates are completely out of the water, and if you drop down from the take this line down to the bottom chart, the lake level on October sixth, when the gates are completely out of the water, is still at two point two five feet. So that meant that the the lake has to drain on its own naturally. Um and how long does that take? It took three and a half weeks. So we started on October first, and we finished the drawdown by November one. It took that whole month. So the point I'm just making is that waiting to start fall release until after after October one will likely prevent the lake from reaching that point one foot mark by November one. This shows just a simple slide about the flexibility we have in gate configuration that one may be more conducive to fish passage than another. So if we know we need four feet of opening, we can do that in one gate or two gates with two feet or four gates with four feet, and we would entertain doing studies with an agency to see what's better for fish passage and what agencies would uh recommend. So for next steps.
It's not a one to one. It would be more head on four gates at a lower setting than.
Yeah, I mean, there may be some variation, but it's worth a study because we do have flexibility in those operations. I feel like it's worth a study. If one would be more beneficial to uh to another over another for the fish, we can work with someone to do that. Okay, so next steps. We have got um let's see, we're encouraging studies, stakeholder feedback. We'll incorporate that into our operations as we can. We um would like to see the installation of a stream flow gauging station on Granite Creek, if that's something that could be entertained. Uh would help in spring with quick decisions we need to make. Uh safety improvements and maintenance activities are underway, and I believe Mike Morrison will talk about those at the dam on the tour. And then as for conclusions, we're literally testing the waters and learning as we experience new uh weather conditions and how those impact gate operations. The the newly implemented modifications funded by the board really are enabling balancing of the river and lake interests. And as we go forward, we continue to informally seek stakeholder feedback and that to inform our continued dam operations. And with that, open for questions.
Right. Uh Mr. Chairman, Michelle, um so we came to Priest Lake in twenty twenty-one, and neither Fish and Game or the boat owners were happy. They were both pretty unhappy. This looks a lot better, or and probably the two gentlemen behind you could answer too, but is it have the fish been a lot happier? I mean, obviously, the voters should be.
I
I mean, once we get done anyway, they will be.
I don't know about the fish status. I'm not sure how the changes impacting the fish. But I would love input on that.
So the so the hundred CFS that we've kept this last couple of years even probably way better than the sixty or less that we had other years.
Okay, Mark. What is the elevation today, Chairman?
We're at three point six last I looked. Uh it's dynamic system, so.
So are you restricting outflow right now? Or is that just?
Yes, we are.
We're a little above two, three, five.
Yeah.
Any question? So the six inch raise, I mean, how much water did that impound? How much more water could you store in the lake with that six inches?
Um it's uh I have to do math.
I just wonder what kind of quantity maybe.
Do you know? Uh I do. Uh that's it's about uh twelve um twelve thousand acre feet.
Okay, so I have I have a question. For the proposed gauge on Granite, so you is that guy, are you looking for a USGS gauge, or are you just looking for a transducer somewhere to be able to to rate that creek and 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 then fairly accurate reading of of what's coming in from that creek?
We have submitted a request to USGS. Um they have a yearly request, and we added that as a a wish list item. But I I probably entertain whatever we can do.
All right, Mr. Chairman, uh you mean you track the daily flows through the dam? Is uh you think the peak has already happened as far as what you're you're seeing today?
I can talk and then Kara can talk. Um Bunch Grass has already mostly had meltouts, so that likely won't contribute to a a peak inflow. Uh Hidden Lake may still contribute to it as a peak. What do you want to add to that?
Um I I would agree. I feel like we've seen um possibly seen the absolute peak um coming in through, but I believe there's going to be a secondary one, um especially with the uh the precipitation that is forecast um coming up. Both hotel sites are about thirty-two percent meltout, so there's still enough snow up there to produce um a somewhat significant peak, in my opinion. Um uh some of my previous studies, I'm looking at the relationship between peak inflow um and snow melt timing. Uh usually, when a bunch grass meadow is about sixty percent melted out, um historically, we've seen peak inflow, and with um Hidden Lake, it's a little bit more. It's about seventy percent meltout. So we're kind of right in that spot where I I we had some hot um days that really sped things up and dropped the um the it it dropped the um at the sweet at both hotel sites, and we definitely saw that come through, but there's still a lot left. It got really cold and everything just kind of stopped for a while as far as the snow melt. Um so uh yeah, I believe we're in for another peak, but it may not be as large as what we've already seen with the first part of the snow melt.
Okay, thank you.
We're just poised for whatever may come, aren't we?
Yeah, yeah, whether rain or whatever happened. All right, we're all gonna go see it this afternoon.
Great.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, um non-action items? Anybody have anything else that I need to bring up before we break? A lunch and tour.
Okay, seeing none. Uh one thing, Mr. Chairman, um Steve has a photographer coming at eleven thirty, which is about now. Uh now that all eight of you are in one location, uh he wants to get a a group photo. Uh so I think that'll probably be the first order of business. Your photographer here.
Yes, we have a little spot right outside the building right here, past the trees.
That'll be first order of business, and then lunch immediately. Following, perfect. We'll check into the hotel after the tour. So um can they leave their equipment and bags here while we're on the field trip?
Yeah, I will be back here.